Board to order, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
...................................................... Thank you.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Meltzer.
Trustee Metuzak?
Present.
Trustee Keys?
Present.
Trustee Patton?
Here.
Supervisor Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Cress?
Present.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Here.
Clerk Meltzer, here. This is all changed.
The years have it.
This is interesting.
You guys keeping track of who says present and who says here?
No, it's just everyone's turn until Mr. -- until Trustee Cress came.
Okay. So that's not a pause. If anyone wishes to make a public comment, we have public comment cards in the front. Please fill out one of the cards. You'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to say what you would like for three minutes. Tonight is a township board meeting for the township board to make decisions, to hear items on the agenda and make those decisions. It is not a meeting for everyone to comment on every single item. If you have a comment, I will accept those comments, but this is not going to be a back and forth, open debate on some of the items on the agenda. So with that, I know, Mrs. Meltzer, you have a public comment because this year, as everyone knows, and it's even more in the forefront right now, elections are very important. And she's got a job that I'm glad I don't have right now. So, Mrs. Meltzer, talk about what's going on with your elections.
Thank you, but can I just say one really quick thing also about the Arboretum? We are looking for volunteers for the Arboretum, and if any of you don't know--
Wait, wait, this is not on the agenda.
I know, no, I know. It's public comment. It's just really quick. We are desperately in need of people to work the Arboretum. It is a fabulous addition to our community. It's a lot of property, it's a lot of work that needs to be done, and there's been a lot of investment in it. And it would be really unfortunate if it fell by the wayside. But the folks that have put it together, they've done an amazing job, but they're getting older, and so we need some young blood, so we need some strong backs. So if any of you would like to work at the Arboretum, you can contact the clerk's office, and then I'll get you in touch with everybody there, the right people, so we can train you properly to help with keeping that beautiful. But the other reason, thank you, Mr. Cannon, for indulging me on this, is it's -- I want to discuss really quick, and it's about early voting, which was an initiative that passed in 2022 under Proposition 2. It was a statewide ballot initiative, and it allows for early voting. Now, my job is to implement whatever the law is. You may or may not like it, but I'm here to tell you what it is because it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity that was voted in by the people, and it allows you to vote up to nine days early prior to Election Day. And why that may be important is that if you can't vote in person on Election Day, this gives you nine other opportunities in which to vote in person, so you don't have to vote absentee if you don't want to. And those -- of those nine days, two of them are Saturdays and two of them are Sundays. And there are going to be three locations within Clinton Township to accommodate you to be able to vote. One at the north end is Kensington Church. Then the other location is right here in the township Civic Center. And then the south end location is at Faith Baptist Church. And the hours are going to be on our website, which actually, they're already on there, so you'll be able to find out the address and the time, and I hope you will find that an accommodation that fits your schedule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, can we get an approval of the agenda? Are there any additions or deletions, by the way, to the agenda?
There are none.
I move support of the agenda.
Support? Supported by Mr. Keys. Roll call, please.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item one is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who has a problem on the board with the consent agenda?
So moved to approve--
A motion is in order to approve.
On support.
Thank you. Supported by Mrs. Patton. Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item two, introduction of applicants seeking reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Dear Board members, there are three terms open on the Parks and Recreation Committee. The committee holds terms of two years. The terms have an expiration date of June 30, 2026. Attached for your review are applications for reappointment from the following applicants: Erin Golambeck, Valerie Chave, Amy Wolschensky. Per the policy guidelines, an invitation has been extended to the applicants to extend the June 3, 2024, board meeting where an opportunity will be given to make a three-minute introduction. Thank you for your attention in this matter. Sincerely, Robert Cannon, Supervisor.
Thank you. And each of those may speak if they're here this evening, but we have three openings, three people who have reapplied. I would recommend to the board that reappoint all three.
So moved.
I move for approval.
Thank you, and support. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to that item? Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item three, introduction of applicants seeking appointment to the Arboretum Committee. This person lives backing up to the Arboretum and is known to the committee members, and they would all love to have this person put on the committee.
Make a motion for approval.
That's Valerie.
Support.
Thank you. And Mrs. Meltzer's right, she shouldn't have brought it up when she did, but we do need people to volunteer in our community. The Arboretum has done a fabulous job over the years of developing. Anyone who has not been there is missing an opportunity to see the beauty, not only of an arboretum, but what residents, volunteers, with minimal supplies, minimal money, have done to an area that was a piece of junk when they started, and it is beautiful today.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item four, introductions of applicants seeking reappointment to the Inclusive Playground Committee.
There are three terms open on the Inclusive Playground Committee. The terms expire June 30, 2026. IPC members hold terms of two years, and the applicants are Tara Koch, Carrie Jantz, and Michael Scott.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Thank you. All good applicants. Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item five, introduction of applicants seeking reappointment to the Historical Commission.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Just so you guys know, this, there's, there are six terms open on the Historical Commission, and then they hold a term of two years, so it would expire June 30, 2026, the reappointments of James Hungerford and Maxwell Hyder.
I think Maxwell was one of the original members also. He goes back a long time out of the committee.
Okay.
Supported by Mrs. Patton. Roll call, please.
I got it. Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Item six, DIA art proposal.
Esteemed Board, as you are aware, we have an arrangement with the Detroit Institute of Arts whereby they are funding an art project in our community. In a prior board meeting, the Township Board authorized that the Grosebeck Pedestrian Bridge be the canvas for the project. DIA has engaged Tatum Lorrie to design the art. Under our arrangement with the DIA, both our board and the DIA board have an opportunity to review the design before the artist proceeds to ensure the design is consistent with the goals and image of our organizations. Ms. Tatum will be attending to unveil her piece to the Clinton Township Board and explaining the symbolism of the pieces in hopes of receiving your approval. Then she will advance to the DIA board for final approval. Your consideration and approval of this amazing design will be greatly appreciated to ensure she can take proceeds earlier this summer. Take, I'm sorry, to ensure she can proceed. I'm sorry, earlier this summer. Dan O'Leary.
Is the artist here this evening?
Yes, she is.
Okay, I thought you were. Now, do you have something you could show everybody? Because I haven't seen it yet.
Do you need up on that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Use that microphone right in front of you.
Thank you.
Turn it down a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not that tall. Thank you.
Excuse me. Clerk Meltzer, I think Ani from DIA is supposed to be on as well. It's supposed to be on the call. So, oh, there she is. You didn't come up?
Well, hello, everyone. Nice to see you all. My name is Tatum Lorrie. I'm an illustrator. I went to Chippewa Valley for high school, and then I graduated from college for creative studies in 28, or I was about to say 2018, 2022. I'm actually a teacher at Romeo High School now, and I taught at Wyandotte Middle School last year. The mural prep that I have for you, I wanted to bring a lot of the survey that you did with Clinton Township into this design, and one of the biggest things in there was water, Clinton River, community, and history. Those are the biggest things that we saw within that. So I will zoom in. Here is a mock-up of what it would look like on the actual column, the support column beneath the pedestrian bridge at 16 and Grosebeck. In this, you can see a representation of the Clinton River flowing, and I have on both top and bottom the rocks that are portraying the people of our community. I wanted them to show different shapes, sizes, and colors to represent everyone that holds the form of our city, and then also to bring in the history aspect of it. I tried to show a few little, like, arrowheads, Native American arrowheads kind of sprinkled in there to bring our really rich roots that we have with Native American history. All of our schools here are named after it, why not include it? And those are sprinkled in to give like a little Easter egg for the pedestrians that do actually pass beneath the bridge or walk by it, as well as show the river flowing and how it all connects us as the river for cars passing by. I did a more graphic representation of this to promote more of a safety thing. That way, it's not too detailed, not too crazy for people going by. I know it's a very busy intersection. I drive it all the time myself. So I wanted to make it still very detailed and interesting to look at and unique, but something graphic, so that there's not going to be rubbernecking or anything like that going on.
Very good.
I love it.
Thank you. And that's all.
Is anybody young? Would you like to speak as well?
Ani, you want to?
Hi. My name's Ani Garbadian. I'm from the Detroit Institute of Arts. I've been working with Tatum and members of your board on this project. Hello. I'm here for support, to answer any questions. If you have any questions pertaining to like the DIA side of things or the project itself, I'm just here if you need anything.
Are you the Tatum who played softball at Chippewa Valley?
Yes, I am.
Did I coach you in softball a couple of years back?
A couple of years? Okay.
Nice to see you.
I thought it was you.
Yes.
They grow up. What can you say?
I went down to school with Tammy Patton's son as well.
Tatum, can you include how many columns this was going to be?
Yes, sorry. Thank you. So on the actual bridge, I was going to be doing one support on each side, so there's two columns per support. So it would be the two columns on the left side and then two columns on the right. So two supports in total.
And what I think the community should know, this is a project that's given to us by the DIA, and we appreciate it very much. And you had control over it, and the board now gets to approve if we like what we see, and then we move on from here.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Thank you. I think it's, it's, I think it's going to be beautiful. I really appreciate that the, the DIA, I would have, I'm on the DIA board, by the way, but I would say the DIA is not giving this. This is a reward for having voted for the DIA village.
It's a thank you.
It's a thank you. And I think we should all really appreciate that fact, that because we supported the DIA, the DIA is helping to beautify our community. I think that that's really important. And I love that a local person is doing this and we're helping out a local artist. So I think it's a great design, and I look forward to voting for it here and voting for it there.
Very good. Tammy?
I just want to say, I love the design. It's very enriched in this township. Like I said, to me, you captured everything, the river, Native American, as well as the diversity in Clinton Township. I've known you since you were like this high, so, and I've watched you, followed you in your career, and as well as your art, your art career has been phenomenal. I mean, I don't know, like, how many times I could say that, but it has been absolutely phenomenal. So to know that you live here, you were a student at Clinton Township, you know, at Chippewa, and that you're bringing this forward is just, it just solidifies, solidifies everything. So, thank you.
Mr. Keys?
Thank you. And yes, I want to commend you on the design and putting this together. I also want to, you know, make sure you're aware that the location that we picked for this was really important to a lot of the members on this board, but also the public. I mean, the Beautification Commission, the Conservation Committee, we've all tried to beautify this area at different times, and some have been successful and others, you know, haven't had the enthusiasm that we want to see. So seeing this gives me a lot of enthusiasm, knowing that, you know, Ms. Meltzer helped us get some, some plantings, but then also Ms. Metuzak and myself were out there planting one year, the daffodils, I think it was. But anyway, just to put it out there, that we really value this, this pedestrian bridge and this intersection. We know the public and the residents do as well, so we thank you for putting the time and the effort to have a comprehensive proposal and something that looks really well.
I see that.
Thank you.
I think it'll make a big impact, and you guys are so good at catching those fly balls, too.
Mr. Cannon, I just want to piggyback off of something that Trustee Metuzak said, that it's, and even you said more of a thank you from the DIA for voting in the village. I'm seeing now in Oakland County that the agreements between Oakland County and the DIA are making these murals an obligation, a requirement, not even just a thank you. So I hope this is just one of many that we find here in Clinton Township. We're seeing these types of murals invested by the DIA throughout the counties, and I hope that this is just one of many to come.
I hope so, too.
Thank you, and I agree. And by the way, anyone who hasn't been to Walmart on Hall Road, you should go in their main entrance and take a look at their wall. Have you seen that? They did a mural on there that is beautiful. It is outstanding. No one will believe it's in Walmart in the entrance.
Mr. Cannon? Can I just say?
Of course.
If, if anyone is interested in looking at the art this very talented person has done, it's under, it's Tatum Lorrie, so it's T-A-T-U-M-L-O-R-W-A-Y dot com, and then go to the portfolio portion of her website. It's just amazing. Your work is amazing.
Thank you.
And not only is it the art, but it's a story. Everything has a meaning with you. It's, it's very impressive, and--
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you're going to be doing. I think it's going to be great.
Tatum, did you do the wall at Chippewa Valley, too?
I did do that. That was my first mural ever.
Yes, it was.
That was nice. I forgot that till now, just now.
It was a good moment. I liked that moment.
It was a great, great moment.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Tatum, did you do the wall at Chippewa Valley, too?
I did do that. That was my first mural ever.
Yes, it was.
That was nice. I forgot that till now, just now.
It was a good moment. I liked that moment.
It was a great, great moment.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
It's nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
When are you going to start painting?
As soon as the, as soon as I can. I'd like to wait for the DIA boards that can approve it. But I can get--
Don't wait for that board. Just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, when do they meet? How long are they meeting?
I'm sorry.
When does the DIA meet for this?
It's, I'll be sharing, now that we have your approval, I'll be sharing this final design with the DIA panel probably next week, and then hopefully it'll be like a week turnaround time where we'll get the response, and then we can start planning.
Great job.
What's your, I know we should have asked these questions during this, but we were just so excited to approve it. What's the timeline for you to, how long do you think it'll take you to, to develop that?
So as a teacher, I have the entire summer off, so I can be out there as long as I need to during the day. So it kind of just depends on when I can get started.
Want to get some proof.
Weather.
And weather.
Weather and things like that.
Weather does get approved, exactly, yes.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey.
Okay, item seven. Public hearing two, special assessment project, P 2035 North Miles Street paving.
So Cannon, at this time, we need to make a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Well--
Mr. Cannon?
Do you want to, let's, let's do this for, this, there's, it's two motions. So this one opens it up for the public comment, and then the second agenda item, or the eighth agenda item, is the one that--
We'll close it.
--will read the resolution. Well, we'll read the resolution, then open it up to the public, and then, yes? Is that correct?
If you'd like, you can read the proposed resolution now, so that people are fully informed on what we're going to be discussing.
Well, then, do we even need a second motion? Because I have it on the agenda.
Well, we need to, we need to close the public hearing, and then we need to approve the resolution as presented.
At that time, you want to do that one? Okay. All right. So the improvement will be approximately 1,750 linear feet of 22-foot wide asphalt pavement placement, driveway approach replacements, and associated drainage improvements, which includes the ditch regrading, culverts, and catch basins in the North Miles Street right away from Little Mac Road to the Westerly extents of 20751 North Miles Street. The project role is designated, the amount listed below is $509,298,56, and the assessment role shall be collected with the first installment to be due December 1, 2024, and following installments to be due on December 1 of each year and every year thereafter. Said installments of special assessment role shall bear interest at the rate of 6.2% per any installment paid after the December 1 due date. So that's the language.
Mr. Cannon, if I could add?
Mrs. Benner?
So basically, the total, the half with the Department of Roads cost share agreement is $509,298,56, which makes the average front foot cost $149,36. So that's taken, multiplied by the front footage of the properties, and that's how people come up with what their assessment would be on.
Comments from the board? Community? The floor is open for a motion?
No, no. We have somebody in the public who wants to--
We have a motion. Should we close it?
No, no.
No, I was, had my hand up.
Yes. You have a right to speak, of course.
Yes, thank you. My question is, I just received a last-minute addendum, package addendum, today at 3:30 this afternoon, when we were under the impression that it was 5% tax on all this. Now it's 6.2. I actually got one at 8:30 a.m., 5%, which I printed out, 3:30. It's changed to 6.2. I wanted to ask about that, and why.
Okay, so the way that the statute works is that this project is under the jurisdiction of the County Department of Roads, but the process is administered by the township.
Oops, sorry. Yeah, just, yeah, just-- Give me a minute. Yep, hang on.
Okay, sorry, hang on.
Go ahead. It's good.
Okay, so in the administration of this, there's a state statute. The state statute says that the township has to front the money. We have two ways to do that. One is through, if we have enough money in the general fund, we have some infrastructure dollars from the feds that we can apply to this, and then the residents either pay it in a lump sum, or they pay it over time for 10 years. The statute actually says the interest rate is set at one point above the bond rate with And then, the residents either pay it in a lump sum, or they pay it over time for 10 years. The statute actually says the interest rate is set at one point above the bond rate, with a maximum of 8%. So what we had to do is, we had to extrapolate, since the township is paying for this upfront, we had to extrapolate what a bond would cost. So a bond, right now, going rate from our investment portfolio is right in the neighborhood of 5.4. However, the federal funds overnight rate, which is the lending rate for the banks, is about 5.32. But I have a couple of months in there of 5.1, if I take it back a full year, right? So I averaged it out to the 5.2, and then adding the 1%, it comes out to 6.2%.
So just today, that was?
Yep, yep.
Because we had been under the assumption it was 5% since the last meeting, so?
Yep, yep. However, the final rate is determined closest to when the resolution passes.
Okay, so, and then also, when do the residents of North Miles have a chance to digest all this, make an informed decision, before it's finalized?
Well, it's gonna be finalized tonight.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Even though they didn't know?
Can I have your name?
They didn't know what?
About the tax increase?
It's not a tax increase.
It's an, it's an increase in the interest rate.
Interest rate? I call it tax.
So if the township wasn't fronting the money, we would've had to bond for it. But because we're funding this upfront, and then collecting the money over time, then we're foregoing the interest rate we would have received on those dollars while they were invested, while they were still township funds. So we're foregoing the increase in that revenue and fronting those dollars, so that we can save you actually some money by having to bond for it. Because when you bond for it, all of those costs then wind up getting added to the project.
My second question, then, what we noticed on the South Miles, that's already been completed, that this, I don't know what they're paying percentage-wise?
I think it's 5, but, but that was the going interest rate, plus the 1% at that time.
At that time, I understand. But it was all added to the winter tax. Is there any reason we cannot divide it between the winter and summer tax to lessen this burden? It's already quite a bit of money.
So, so the way this process works is that you have the ability to pay it upfront.
Yeah.
And then, if you can't pay it upfront, you spread it on your taxes.
Right.
If it was added to both bills, it would still be the same, although you do have the ability to make payments at any time, so you can lessen the amount of interest that you pay over time. By the way, it's not compounded interest, so you never pay interest on top of interest, you only pay interest on the principal. It's called simple interest.
Right, for me, it would be about over a thousand bucks over the 10-year period, but?
Yep, so you will, you will have to make the installment payment based upon that percentage of the principal, so that, so, so that it'll be divided up. The total amount will be divided up by 10, so you'll pay 10% a year, plus the interest rate. If you were to make payments over time, you would reduce the amount of interest that you pay, in addition to the installment that you're required to pay at the winter tax bill.
Unfortunately, I wish I could pay it all upfront, but I can't, and most of my neighbors feel this, are the same boat.
Yeah, yep.
So I thought if we could at least divide it above, amongst summer and winter tax, it would lessen the burden on all of us. Is there any thought, or?
Mr. Cannon?
Is there a way we could do that, or, I don't know?
I, we've never seen it done that way, but we didn't allow, prior to becoming treasurer, it was not allowed to make the additional payments. So, that's one of the changes that we made, to, there's some extra accounting involved, but we wanted to make sure that people had the opportunity to pay more upfront and front-load the cost of it, so that they can reduce the interest payment over time. It can wind up getting paid in less than 10 years. But splitting it on both bills would have a minimal effect.
Not for me, personally.
So, so what you would do is, if you added up that amount that the installment payment is going to be, divide that by 12, and then set that in a separate account, in your own bank account, you would then have that money to pay it on the winter bill.
So, otherwise, there's no, it's not gonna happen? It's gonna be on the winter bill?
The winter bill, correct.
Sir, before you leave, can you get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Louis Comaianni, C-O-M-A-I-A-N-N-I, 21081 North Miles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments?
Mrs. Bednar?
Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Dolan?
I, I think in fairness to everybody who's here, who may not be fully aware of this, although it was contained in the notice of hearing that was distributed in this matter, tonight, if you do want to challenge the amount of your assessment, you should make note of that when you come to the microphone, so that the clerk can keep a record of who is here, not just to comment generally, but who also wants to challenge their assessment, which is done through an appeal process to the Michigan Tax Tribunal.
Mr. Cannon, can you give that, that process?
Yes.
Yeah, just tell them, not only?
That's basically, by statute, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. By statute, the process of the special assessment comes to what's known as a second public hearing, which is what's occurring tonight. We're looking to adopt the Fifth Resolution, we call it Resolution 5, which actually imposes the lien and starts the process of the money becoming due. It's at this point in time where either by mail, you could've delivered a opposition to the proposed assessment, or you can, as many of you are here now, if you choose to elect to verbally indicate that you intend to protest the special assessment, once you've done that, you've secured for yourself the right, within 30 days, to appeal this matter to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, if you so choose. And of course, I'm speaking on behalf of the township as a whole now, and anyone who does want to do that, you know, we would recommend that you confer with someone who's got expertise in this area, although you can, if you choose to, do it yourself. Make, do that appeal yourself, so.
Thank you.
I still have, just that question, though, is, Mr. Dolan, is, explain to them that it's based on whether or not there is a perceived value, right?
Well, the, the appeal, basically, that, the grounds for appeal that the tax tribunal will review on is whether or not the benefit that is conferred from the road being improved adjacent to your property is proportional to the cost of the improvement. Doesn't have to be dollar for dollar, but it's a proportionality test that's looked at.
Thank you, that's what, that's what I wanted them to understand, you know, what, what you're considering when you meet with the state tax tribunal.
Mr. Cannon, can I just?
Yes.
It's complicated. So if people anticipate they would like to appeal this to the state tax tribunal in the next 30 days, they need to come up to the microphone and say, "You're objecting to this?" That preserves their right to do that. Otherwise, they lose their right to appeal to the tax tribunal.
Unless they have already, in writing, submitted the same thing.
Okay.
I have received one email so far regarding that appeal.
Okay, thank you.
And you guys can email me tomorrow, too. It's not like you have to get up here. If you don't feel comfortable getting up, I mean?
Well, no, no, it's gotta be done, by, by today.
You could've mailed.
It's gotta be done in writing, delivered to the clerk, or, they can just stand up and indicate that they want to preserve their right to appeal, if they choose to do that.
Yeah, just go on up. So if you want to, you should just come up to do that.
Do you, do you want to take a recess for a few minutes?
No, no. If someone wants to appeal, in the past, Mr. Dolan, we haven't had a lot of appeals.
No, I mean, we've, you know, it's, it's, correct, that's true.
I guess, I guess that's the question that I was trying to get answered without saying it in the room.
Can we get your name and address for the record? That way, you're on record.
Yeah, gotcha. Debbie Johnson, 21076 North Miles. My question is, is if we've already signed, or, well, we never got a chance to sign, because they didn't approach us, but if we've already disagreed from the first time they ran a petition, and then the second petition was never presented to us, so that means that we're on record as an appeal?
No, you have to appeal, if this is a actual second circulated petition, if the first one didn't go anywhere, you have to preserve your right with regard to this petition by either in writing, having sent your objection to the clerk, or by your appearance today, indicating that you are objecting to preserve your right to appeal.
So, not to sound stupid, but, at the beginning of all this, when we tried to turn down the roads, it was turned down. But then, they allowed another petition to circulate?
Right.
Which was never presented to us, but they knew that from before, we were against it. But we never signed any petition saying?
Right.
Yea or nay, they just took it from the previous one, is all they did. So that's, we never saw the petition, because the man that was circulating it stated he wasn't gonna come around to us, because he knew we'd say no, but we didn't sign it, saying no.
Right, but that doesn't matter.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is?
Let me explain that.
The appeal part.
Yeah, let me explain that, based on the comments you made. Under the process, which is a state statute, the, there are two ways that special assessments come about. One, the township can just start the process, but then, if 20%, more than 20% of the people come in and oppose it, that'll stop the process. Secondly, as occurred here, and as the township follows, we wait for the residents to come forward. The residents have to submit in excess of 50% of the parcel quantity, based on frontage, front footage. Once they do that, it's up to them. They can go out and continue to increase the percentage above that, or they can stop circulating the petition. But once they are greater than 50%, then the process starts.
So the first one was the township, is what you're saying? No, it was circulated by somebody else?
The first one, apparently, I don't have all the facts on it, but?
That's what, we wish, we would've had the facts, but that's why I'm trying to get.
From what you're telling me, it's most likely that there were insufficient signatures on the sec, well, here, I'll let Mary talk, apparently she's got more.
So, the first one actually was circulated at the same time as South Miles, and that one did not have, it ended up dropping below the 50%. Therefore, the board did not move forward. Then approximately a year later, someone circulated the petition. That petition got 56% of the signatures. So that is, this, what's on this agenda today is that second petition.
We were told at whatever meeting it was, and it was through, I don't know, maybe Kim, but I was told by our neighbor that it got turned down, the first time, so that's why.
So, so the first time, the first time dropped below 50%, so therefore, it didn't move forward. But you can start an SAD, or Special Assessment District, at any time.
How often do you start one of those?
It's by resident application.
So if I wanted to start one right now to stop it, I could stop it?
No, no.
That I'm going to, but I'm just saying?
No, you can't stop it.
I'm just trying to get an answer.
You can start it anytime you wish. It failed the first time because of lack of signatures. I think there were signatures, then people backed off, and now, it's back on, because people signed up again, other people signed up, and it's over 50%. All this board is doing is acting as a conduit. We don't do anything other than accept the petitions, approve them, and then bring it back, and then have the county put the road in.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I wanted to get that kind of answer, so I was trying to, you know, because that's what I was told, that it got turned down, so then?
I mean, what you were told is fine, but the fact of the matter is, it was started, passed, turned down, because people pulled their name off, now it's back on with enough signatures to move ahead.
So, that's what I was?
So, Mr. Cannon, if I may?
Yeah.
So, okay, so, to Ms. Bednar, it's my understanding that this is moving forward with a match from the County Department of Roads. They have a $2 million grant that they allow to, it's for all the townships in Macomb County, and they'll split it up, doing four projects a year, limited to $500,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, when North Miles and South Miles came in together, the project cost was, like, closer to $2 million. So when North Miles pulled some names off of the petition, people who had signed said, "No, wait, we don't want to go forward with this," that means that South Miles went through with almost a 50% match from the county, because it's limited to that $500,000, and it came in around the $1 million range. So now, that North Miles, somebody approached the township and said, "Hey, we want to try this again."
Okay.
Just for North Miles, not both of them combined. We allowed, when, once North Miles dropped off, we had to go to the Department of Roads, ask them, "Is it okay if we proceed just with South Miles, with North Miles being drawn out of the district?" They said yes, that was okay.
But they only got, they didn't get a grant, is what you're saying?
Right, no, but I'm saying, they did get the grant on South Miles because, and they got close to the 50%, because the project cost was around $1 million, $500,000 limit, you know, so that's 50%. Now that this project is moving forward, it's moving forward with a close to 50%. I don't know, the total project cost is what?
Okay, so we'll get whatever grant they would have gotten?
Yes, this does have.
Yeah, so basically, by doing this separately, you're maximizing the grant. You're paying 50% of the cost, rather than 100% of the cost. Or, if they went together, you would've probably been receiving maybe a benefit of 25%, and you would've had to pay 75.
Okay, so it was better we split, is what you're saying?
In some respects, yes.
Well, I mean, those are nice questions to know, because?
Yep.
I, I just feel as though, and I don't know if it's, it's just me, but I think it's more than me, that through all of this, we don't do this on a regular basis, the neighbors and all that. And even in the explanation, that's why I stepped up here, because I see several people back here shaking their heads, because they don't understand the legal terminology and all that stuff that you're saying. So, maybe in the future, if you're doing something which you're supposed to be working for us, maybe you could put it more in layman's terms, so that we could understand, because a lot of people may not understand why they're here today, maybe they thought they might stop it, maybe they won't, you know, but?
Yeah.
I didn't even know why I was going to this meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really didn't.
So, public hearing, and it's the people's opportunity to ask any questions that they want, and it's our job to do our best to answer those questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cannon, if I could just, to elaborate off that, because I do think it's true that there are some, some areas where there's may have been a cost saving, but the reality is, is we've seen construction costs have only increased after year after year, so for all those out there that are just thinking about doing this in their neighborhoods, you know, splitting the, the roads is not always the best idea. In some cases, it, you know, it works out that you, you save a little bit, but the county's charging us administrative costs, bid costs, construction costs are going up, as we saw, even with the rates, those went from 5% to 6%. So, it's, in some areas, you'll see cost savings, but in other areas, you're gonna see, you know, an increase.
I guess I, I'm sorry.
No, you need, we can't hear you back there.
I know, I was gonna go back to putting, except one of the questions.
You may, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Mr. Cannon, while she's walking up, can I just, just say that, on anything the township's doing, we are working for you. She's right, Debbie is right, we work for you guys, so if you have questions, or if you want to sit down and meet one-on-one even, or, you know, we're happy to do that. And you can contact the, the clerk's office, the Treasury Department, the supervisor's office, even the trustees can set time aside to meet and discuss, so that you have a clear understanding of what it is we're doing with your money.
So just on this payment thing that he was talking about, when, that you said you can either pay it off at the beginning, or, so, at the time they, I don't know when they're gonna assess it, do we have to tell them, one way or another?
Yeah, so, so just before the December tax bill comes out, that comes out December 1st?
Okay.
You're gonna get a notice that says, "Here's the total project cost for your specific property," and that's based upon how many feet of frontage, you know, North Miles is that horseshoe, right? So, there's a formula attached to it that says, "Hey, if you're on the pie-shaped lot, and you've only got this much feet of frontage, you're getting some added to you, and other people, you know, are getting some, you know, subtracted if they're on a corner, or thing like that." But, you're gonna get that notice just before the tax bill. If you don't pay it in full, then, an installment payment will be added to the tax bill, for the December bill.
Okay, and are they going to send out a letter stating our exact amount?
Yes.
Ahead of time, or?
Yes.
December 1st, saying, "Here it is, this is what you get."
So, the notice comes out before the tax bill, because I need time to add it to the bill, so that, you know, we know, okay, yes, these are the ones that paid in full, so it's not being added. Then, you know, if, if it doesn't get paid, then an installment payment gets added to the tax bill.
Are they gonna re-measure and give us a?
No, so that's already determined, right, Ms. Bednar?
We know exactly what it's gonna be, from what you sent out?
So, right, I can, we have, so we know what your front footage is, and then it's gonna be multiplied by the 149 and some change, dollars.
Okay, but, do we have to figure that out, or?
No, I have that, in fact, if you, would you like to know what yours is?
Sure. Or I can get it after?
No, 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 we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, I can get it after.
She can call, and I'm glad to have you call, but we can't do everybody's tonight.
That's fine, that's fine.
If you call the Department of Public Services and ask for me, we'll be able to get you those numbers.
And your name again?
Mary Bednar, I'm the Director of Public Services.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Yes, sir.
So just for clarification, Debbie, you did not make that request for appeal? Debbie?
No, I didn't make it.
Did you make the request for appeal, or no?
Well?
Are you making one, yes or no? You are? Okay.
She's making the request for appeal.
Okay.
The walls.
Yes, sir.
Which doesn't mean she has to appeal, but she's deserving the right to do so.
Exactly.
I didn't do that formally, so I would like to do the same.
Okay.
Request for an appeal.
Okay, and he was up here before with his name and address?
I have it.
21081.
Also, in the, today's addendum, it, it did print out everybody's address with an exact amount. Is that going to stay the same, or is that could change also?
I, I've not seen that list.
That does not include the interest.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah, so that would be your principal balance.
But that's not gonna change?
Ms. Bednar?
Because the, the tax did.
Mr. Chabot, I was out of the office, is that the, the, the front footage that you just handed out?
That was the assessment role.
Okay.
From the assessment role, so that's not gonna change.
Talk louder, please. It's hard to hear everyone.
I believe that that's from the assessment role, is what Mr. Chabot said.
It was in today's addendum package, if you wanted to look at it.
Right, Mr. Chabot is not on the mic, which is why I'm speaking. I think he said it's from the assessment role, so that's coming directly off of it.
Because that would be good, we would need to know that, if it's just like the?
That is the correct amount without the interest.
And that, it will not change?
That will not change.
Unlike the interest?
Correct, that, that's, that is the assessment role, so that is the principle.
Okay, just so we know, we want to get our numbers straight, because it's just a lot of money, you're talking $17,000 for me personally, so. I just retired, so.
So, so the idea is, is that, you know, nothing has changed, once there's a vote, then it's locked in. The vote is actually, we're in the public hearing right now, the next agenda item is the actual vote for the Township Board to move the process forward, to send it over to the Department of Roads, says, "Hey, it's approved, start the project."
Right, I was just wanting to make sure that number was the correct number. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add my name, I'd like to add my name to the right to appeal for North Miles.
Address?
21098.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, can you say your name, too, please?
Lorraine Dana.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion? And some more?
There's still, there's still people on speakers.
There's somebody back. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to speak, I just wanted to.
You, you may speak, of course.
Yeah, Greg Cerny, 20922, North Miles. I just want to make sure that the board knows that every neighbor in our neighborhood had a chance to look at the propos, the, the cost, everything. I talk to Kim all the time to make sure that the neighbors were up to date on what was going on. Some neighbor's driveway I walked into, and they told me to stick it. So, just letting you know that?
Excuse me, we're not gonna speak from the audience, please.
All, all the neighbors, I had, I walked up to every neighbor house, and had all the facts in my hand, and if they didn't have the facts, they had the chance to call, call Kim and find out if, if my facts were wrong. And as the letter that we just got in the mail, what, two weeks ago, that said it was $125 a, a month, and $1,500 a year, or whatever, it's exactly what the paperwork that I had gotten from Kim in the very beginning. So, I just want to make sure that the board knows that I did what I thought was right, to make sure that everybody knew, some people just didn't want to hear it, so, that was all.
Thank you, are you requesting a right to appeal?
No, heck no, heck no.
Thank you.
Heck no.
Do we have a motion, Kim?
We have a motion, that was the motion to open, to open it, but we never really voted to.
We have a discussion.
I can withdraw the motion to open.
Well, no, don't do that. At this point in time, the public hearing is open, and if, you should see if anybody else is?
Any other comments?
And a motion to close is in order, if no one else has any.
Does your motion to close? Thank you, is there a second to close?
Who made the motion to close?
Mr. Keys.
Uh, Mr. Keys, supported by Mrs. Patton.
Just?
I mentioned this a long time back with this group, by the way, also, because it happens every time. When something like this passes, usually half or a little more than half wants it, a little less than half doesn't want it. If it's the other way around, it doesn't go. And then you get mad at each other. Usually, and I'm praying this happens with this project too, in the end, it's such a good project that everybody likes it. And I pray that happens because I get asked a lot of times, because I'm retiring from this job after 40 years, my worst parts of this job are when neighbors are mad at neighbors. And I know that's happening right now, I know that. I hope it ends because this will be a very nice project. We are blessed that the county is paying for half of the project. Very few subdivisions get that. I know that doesn't seem like a lot when you're paying as much as you're paying and I know that's a lot of money. But in the end, I hope you're happy with it and I hope you get along with your neighbors. Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passed.
Thank you, so we move on to item eight?
Yes, sir. Dear honorable board members, on May 16th, 2024, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met.
Kim, we've got to adopt the resolution. Item eight.
I thought we did that. Oh, there was just a close. Oh, okay, hang on. This is seven then. And then. Okay, all right, so.
The resolution was already read.
Yeah, so trustee Patton made the motion and treasurer Gilliam seconded initially?
No, no, no.
Let's just do, let's just do that. I'm just trying to, thank you, Paul. There we go, thank you.
Jack, did you have something to say?
The motion before you now is to adopt Resolution 5, which is opposing the lead as presented, the form as presented. Everyone in agreement on that?
Yes.
Motion in support?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item nine, approval of professional services for the 2024 water reliability study. This is a state mandate that happens once every five years that we must comply with.
On May 16th, 2024, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met with Township Engineer Scott Chabot and the Director of Public Services, Mary Bednar, to discuss the 2024 water reliability study along with the AEW proposal for professional services. According to Ms. Bednar, the study is required by the state of Michigan every five years and the last one was completed in 2018. AEW, the township's engineering firm, has submitted a proposed to complete the work at a cost of $33,000. This additional charge is submitted for the board's approval because it is outside the scope of work of the existing AEW contract. Following the discussion, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the board approve the AEW proposal for professional services for the 2024 water reliability study. Please contact Public Services Director Mary Bednar, Township Engineer Scott Chabot, or me for further information or questions concerning this recommendation. Respectfully, Paul Gilliam, Treasurer and Chair for Budget Ways and Means Committee.
Move adoption, support.
Mr. Keys?
Yes, thank you. I was just hoping I could get an explanation on why we wouldn't go out to bid for this type of service. I see it's obviously not within AEW's existing contract, but I would assume there are a lot of different contracting agencies that would be able to provide that.
So it's an engineering service and it's not included in their contract because their contract is based on percent construction and this is not, this is a study. My recommendation would be, first of all, we have a timeline that has to be done this year, so we have to turn it around fairly quickly, but they did the initial study and usually communities will use their consulting engineering firm for this because there's a history. You're looking at the existing water system, you know what projects were done, which projects haven't been done, which valves have been turned, there's a history because, and that's what you're looking at is the reliability. So it's definitely my recommendation that we would use our current consulting engineering company.
And I appreciate that and I can definitely see the value of using the current company. I guess, though, that's, you know, again, in the issue of trying to be transparent and have an open bidding process, we bid out our engineering services and we, you know, when there's something that comes up that's outside of those services, this board is then tasked with deciding who that contractor is going to be. If we always lean on the fact that we have an existing relationship with someone, then nothing would ever go out to bid, especially knowing that this is something we have to do every five years, I would think we'd want to just build it into our contract so that way it is bid out on a regular basis. So I know that in the past I've approved being able to work with AEW on projects that are outside of our scope and not going out to bid because I see the value added there. I am struggling a bit with this one and I think that there are other firms that could be able to provide that. If anything, I hope that in the future we'll be able to build this into our existing contracts so at least there's that layer of negotiation and bidding if, you know, if we're, yeah, so those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
I agree with bidding most things and I guess my, I don't have a concern, concern is the wrong word, my.
What are your thoughts?
My thought about this is that we know we have to do this every five years and we have an engineering contract that runs for five years, why isn't this part of the contract when we, when we look at it again? We just approved for five years, it's going to come up again, it seems to coincide with this water reliability survey and we should try to think about that five years from now, if any of us remember, or we're still here, but to include that in the regular contract bidding, I think that makes some sense, but I'm going to vote clearly in favor of this.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
No.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Superv, I'm sorry, treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 10, approval of the senior center treadmill replacement.
Dear honorable board of trustees, on May 16th, 2024, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met with the senior center director Matt Mikowski and assistant director Debbie Travis to discuss the senior center treadmill replacement and reallocation of funds. According to the letter presented by the senior department and their comments during the meeting, the existing treadmills are more than 20 years old and replacement parts are often not available. The senior center is seeking board approval for the purchase of five replacement treadmills at a cost of $29,465 through the competitive bid process created by Source While, a national purchasing co-op utilized by state and local governments. Funds are available in the senior center's deferred revenue account as a result of a generous donation from longtime members Mr. and Mrs. Paul Hendrickson. Following the discussion, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the board approve the purchase of five treadmills and cable management for the senior center along with the corresponding budget amendment in the deferred revenue account. Please contact senior center director Matt Mikowski, senior center assistant director Debbie Travis, or me for further information or questions concerning this recommendation. Additionally, I ask the board to join me in thanking Mr. and Mrs. Hendrickson for their donation and making this fitness room upgrade possible. Respectfully, Paul Gilliam, Treasurer and Chair for Budget Ways and Means Committee.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
And to thank the family for their.
Supported by Mr. Keys.
Can I?
I'm sorry, hold on. Go ahead.
I was saying, and I was thanking the family for their remodel, so.
Second.
No, Mr. Keys already seconded.
Oh, second.
Mr. Keys, I know you had something you wanted to add to it.
No, I would just raise my hand a second.
So before, before we, you know, make the motion or consider this a friendly amendment to the motion, we're not actually amending the deferred revenue account, we're amending the capital improvement budget so we can transfer these funds into the capital improvement budget to allow for the expenditure. So Ms. Print, I talked with the finance director today and she wanted to make sure that I made that clarification.
Thank you, and she concurred from the back of the room.
Oh, she is there, okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll accept that, right?
Yes.
As part of the motion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 11, reconsideration of the chipping service discontinuation.
Dear honorable board of trustees, on May 16th, 2024, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met with the Director of Public Services, Mary Bednar, regarding the discontinuation of on-demand chipping services within the township. Following several budget workshops in response to the downward trajectory of the township's general fund fund balance, township board members were briefed on the need to find cost savings and were presented options prepared by the various township departments. One of these, one of those cost-saving options approved by the board, the discontinuing of on-demand chipping services, has been met with a considerable amount of opposition. As a result, the Department of Public Services was asked to develop and present the Budget Ways and Means Committee with options regarding the future of chipping services while also considering the current general fund budget pressures. Following the discussion and public participation, the committee voted unanimously to present all four options contained in the presentation to the June 3 township board meeting without any specific recommendation. Upon the board's determination, the Department of Public Services will administer the program accordingly. Additionally, the board's determination may require corresponding budget amendments. Please contact Public Services Director Mary Bednar or me for further information or questions regarding this issue. Respectfully, Paul Gilliam, Treasurer and Chair for the Budget Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you. Mrs. Bednar, explain the situation as it stands today.
And so what I'm going to do is present to you a similar presentation that I did to the Budget Ways and Means Committee.
Stop right there. What is the situation today?
So currently today, the township board, back in February, voted to discontinue the services of chipping in the township. At this current date, that went effective through May 13th. On May 13th, we started to, what we do, what we were calling clear the subdivisions, clear the roads. So what we would do is go down every road in the township. If there were branches out, we would chip them, take care of them. Once we were completed with that road, we would clear that road so we wouldn't come back to that road. As of today, every subdivision road has been cleared. We are only in main roads now and so we expect by the end of this week that all of our main roads, Maravian, in fact, I think Maravian may be done today, but I didn't get a feedback at the end of the day, so, but we're doing the main roads and then we'll be done. So that's where we are currently today.
Thank you. Now proceed.
Okay, so this is a very similar presentation to what I did to Budget Ways and Means, but as a committee, there's lots of things said, a lot of discussion, so I've tried to incorporate what I heard into this presentation to make some changes. So there will be changes to this presentation that was not necessarily part of the Budget Ways and Means, but it was a reflection of new data and new information that I heard listening to Budget Ways and Means. So the first thing I want to go over is the approximate cost of employees who provided the chipping services in 2023. We had one crew that was $210,000. We had additional $50,000 when we had to use a four-person crew and then we had $12,000 and some change for overtime. That total salary and benefits cost is $272,200. Here is our current chipping equipment, which was bought with the sanitation fund. You can see here that they're quite old. Our trucks are 2006, 2007 and then our actual chippers were purchased in 2012. And you can see there the miles and the hours on those, those pieces of equipment. The next slide here is the approximate cost of fuel and major equipment repairs. This does not include routine maintenance like oil changes and stuff, this is just the major repairs. In the two, the average cost is about $18,000 a year. The fuel cost for all the equipment is approximately $9,000 a year. So that would be equipment costs, not including the routine maintenance of about $27,000 a year. So the overall cost for the chipping program in a year is approximately 300,000, 299,200. The sanitation fund in the last fiscal year, 2324, only reimbursed the general fund 250,000. So there was an actual offset of $50,000 that came out of the general fund as well as the sanitation fund of the 250. Here is our five-year replacement cost of equipment. This was assuming that we are going to continue to be chipping on a, throughout the whole township all year round. This year, we're scheduled to buy a new truck for 100,000. Then you'll see there's, there's other expenses. That is a five-year total of $600,000 in equipment. There was another number out there that was 700, I think, 50,000. That was actually a six-year total because we know that we're going to need to then start replacing in five years and so it's kind of a reoccurring cost, but that's where that number is different. This is the five-year projection, not the six-year projection. Here are some of the projects DPW has taken on recently that saves the general fund some money. We've taken on the Joy Park removal project, same thing with George George removal project. These are projects that were bid out and instead of having the contractor do some of the removals, our DPW employees did the removals. So we're trying to stretch our money as far as we can. If our, our internal staff can do it, we try to do it ourselves. I'm not going to read through the whole list, but here, here's kind of some list of some of the different things we've done. One of the biggest things is that concrete pad in the back of the senior center so that we can actually put up the tent that was bought during the COVID times with that ARPA money. So they actually, during the summer, will have an extra room basically to be able to have activities. Here are some of the projects that we could take on if we were to not be chipping on a regular basis. For example, we could be mowing and plowing the Boneyard Trail and the Spillway Trail. We currently have a contract with HCMA to do that. That contract is a little less than $34,000 a year, so that would be a direct savings that we could take on that activity directly. There are several other things in here that we could take on as well. Again, I'm not going to necessarily read them, but these are some of the stuff that we'd be able to, be able to take on with, with our extra time. The next thing is what is an emergency weather event? This has been discussed quite a bit and so people kept asking, when we have a storm, when do we get chipping versus not? We're calling it an emergency weather event. An emergency weather event, as defined by FEMA, is widespread and severe. So what we would be doing is contacting our emergency manager, who is a full, full-time employee here at the township, as well as we, he would be referencing state and federal agencies to make a determination of that response. So it's, we're not going to FEMA to say, is it an emergency? But our emergency manager in-house would be able to say, yes, this was a widespread, severe event. Current contract services through GFL for composting, and I say that currently, so is, we can bundle any of your compost material in four feet and under sections, has to be 50 pounds or less. You can bag any of your composting. You also can use a compost container through GFL, it's a 96-gallon container, or you can use your personal containers of 32 gallons or less. That's kind of current what we can do. So this first one, Mr. Cannon, I actually already had us, I briefly talked about, this is the first option, which is what the board has already approved and I'm not going to read every point. The only thing that we would change, and this came actually out of the Budget Ways and Means, is instead of, we were going to do this drop-off service and we were only going to last, basically have it last through mid-June, we've actually had about a dozen people use that service. In fact, some people used the service and we hadn't even cleared their street yet because they wanted to get rid of their stuff before we got there. So we've had about a dozen people use it and we think that that would be a good opportunity to be able to offer by appointment, if someone wants to drop off their compost at the DPW yard on Garfield, we would be able to do that. So again, it's kind of by appointment. So now, not only do you have your current GFL services that will come right to your curb and get it, it will also have this drop-off service. So that would be the only thing we changed with the current service that the board already approved. Here's your pros and cons. The pros for discontinuing it is reduce the most costs for both sanitation and general fund. Another pro is to minimize potential sanitation rate increases. The next is also frees up manpower for additional and ongoing projects and offers services similar to the other communities in the area. The con, it would be eliminates, chipping option would be to cause, could cause more work and expense to the residents. So this is where the board comes in, and they said, Mary, look at other options. So here are three more options of what we could do. First is a chipping service offered for six months. What that basically looks like is residents could put out the branches for chipping services from May 1st to September 30th of each year. The DPW would commit one crew of two people for chipping during this time. After the last month of service, DPW would clear an entire street and not return to those streets until the following year, and we would be have chipping still available after a declaration of an emergency weather event. Again, though, compost services would still be available through GFL. We did have to modify that plan a little bit because, to make it budget-neutral, because to do main streets, we have to have four people. So in order to make it budget-neutral, to try to balance that, the alternate plan would be to start on May 15th and in August, on August 31st, and then we'd add two more people for one week a month to be able to do those main streets. The pros to that would be reduces some of the cost in the sanitation and general fund, and it allows the chipping option for the residents still. The cons is does not free up manpower for additional ongoing projects, does not cover busy months, which are usually April and October, our busiest months, and does not decrease our budget by a full 50%. Even though it's six, it's half of a year, it wouldn't reduce it by 50%. The next one we, that we looked at was chipping service with a fee, and this service would be offered from April 1st to December 1st. The residents would register and pay online fee for chipping services. It would be a $100 non-refundable fee. That includes a maximum 20 minutes chipping per stop. Additional time would be billed as needed for a fee of $20 per 20-minute increment. DPW would provide services within five weeks of the registration date. The reason that's important is because we don't know how many people are going to need this, and we're going to still try to keep them to be efficient, so we're not driving all over the township. We'd be trying to do clusters in the same neighborhoods at the same time. Chipping would still be available for an emergency weather event, and that would be free if that's what the board wanted. But if we did have an emergency weather event, then that five weeks could get increased, because now we could have a higher amount of need for chipping. And then continue, once again, I'm going to say this a couple times, we can always still have our GFL contract that has composting, so you can bundle, bag, or put it in a container. The pros and cons for chipping with a fee, pros would be reduces some of the costs in both sanitation and general fund, allows chipping options for residents, and it could free up manpower for additional ongoing projects. The cons, only registered customers would be serviced, and potentially, we wouldn't meet the customer's satisfaction, because once they start paying for it, they're, you know, are they going to need us to now sweep up the road and do other activities and so forth? So we're concerned that that would be a higher expectation. The last option would be two seasonal cleanups. We're doing, would offer a spring cleanup and a fall cleanup. Residents can put out their chipping material between April 15th and April 30th, and then through the month of May, DPW would come and chip that. And just like earlier, we would clear a street. So we'd come in on May 1st, start chipping, and we would clear, once that street was cleared, we go on to the next street, and we'd go through the whole township. So it would be a service that the whole township could use. And then we would do it again in the fall. People would put out between September 15th and September 30th, and then DPW would pick up that in the month of October. DPW will clear the streets, like I already said, and again, the chipping would be available after a declaration of an emergency weather event. In the meantime, in between those pickups, you do have current contract services with GFL to bundle, bag, and put in containers. And then we did add this as well, is because we did have so many people, like I said, we had about a dozen people come already using our service to drop off this year, and they really appreciated that and really thought it was a great service to offer. We would also offer that all-year-round drop-off service, by appointment, though. Pros, reduces some of the costs in both sanitation and general fund, allows chipping option for residents, frees up manpower for additional and ongoing projects, promotes healthy tree maintenance. DNR actually has forestry people that talk about this. You're supposed to actually trim your trees in the spring or in the fall. If you do it in the summer, it actually allows your tree to be more susceptible to disease. So this would actually promote forestry measures. The cons would be that you only get chipping twice a year, and another con is we would still have to buy the equipment, but we might be able to prolong it. So we might not have to, because we're not going to be out there every day, every week, we might be able to prolong that. So we don't have an exact cost. We're not out to buy equipment just to buy it, but we would have to look at it and see how much wear and tears on it, so that we can make sure that we have safe equipment for our guys. And I think that is, yeah, that's it.
What happens when we have an event right now where we have to go into our parks, or we have an emergency and we have to go out on the streets?
So, so we do currently go into our parks approximately 15 to 20 days a year, and we would still be, I mean, parks are still our property, and it is our responsibility to maintain it, so we would continue to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Questions of the board? Ms. Benton?
So, thank you for hearing me. One of my questions would be, you said if they did six months, it doesn't necessarily cut the cost in half. What would be the cost, then? What does it bring it down to percentage-wise?
So, so because of the summer months as our heavier, busier months, we're anticipating that it'd probably be more like a 70%, but again, until we actually are doing that, we wouldn't know. So it's not a 50/50, it would be more like a 30, 35%.
But we're not sure, just because we haven't done this before?
Right. I mean, you know, one thing I did mention at Budget Ways and Means that I would like to mention here, is whatever the board decides, if we could try to commit to a two-years, that would help, because then I can have the data, and we can be able to look at it and say, okay, it is 35% or it is, you know, and as far as when we need the equipment, because on this two-year, or that two-seasonal cleanups, we can already say, okay, it's going to be two months instead of 12 months. The six months, when, you know, when is that equipment going to need to be replaced? Probably sooner. So again, we'd have to look at it.
Okay. And so then you said the $299,200, it's reimbursed by the general fund, all but $40,000. So really, the sanitation fund or this, the chipping service is being reimbursed by the general fund, correct?
So the chipping services is part of the general fund, and it's reimbursed from the sanitation fund up to $250,000.
Okay, so really, it's covered all but $40,000?
Fifty thousand.
All but fifty, I'm sorry, 50,000, I'm after the.
The sanitation fund, right. And our sanitation fund also is having, probably is, we're seeing a decrease in the revenue. So we're concerned about both funds and making sure that they both stay healthy.
And the reason why we picked chipping, I'm just trying to get a lot of information, the reason why we picked chipping, I'm looking at the other projects you were speaking of, it's so that we can do other projects?
Again, to save money. So for example, instead of having a contractor go pour a concrete pad for the senior center, and my staff was able to do that and just pay for the material costs. So these are other projects that the board has asked us to do, and so this would allow my staff to be able to be able to do some of that. For example, the siding of the, of the comfort station. We were able to do that instead of hiring a contractor, so now it's just the cost of materials instead of a whole contract and so forth.
I understand that. So when I look at this list, and not being funny or anything like that, and I won't take anybody, take this personally, when I look at a Bonyard Tree parking area, I mean, really, how many of us are really going to go over to the tree and go park somewhere to go look at a Bonyard Tree versus wanting chipping? And that's just me. I mean, I appreciate the art, but.
None of these projects.
I don't see us doing it.
I disagree.
I'm just.
I don't use any chipping, ever, in all my years I've been here.
Okay.
And I do go to the Bonyard Tree to see it.
It's somewhere to park.
Okay.
But I still have the floor, right?
Well, you just said, who's going to do it?
Well, I mean, when you look at numbers.
Okay, go ahead.
So when we look at numbers of, it came up that even supervisor Cannon said only 20% use the service. Only 20% use the splash pad, because I think a lot of.
No, no, I didn't say that.
No, you, you actually did.
No, I said I use the art.
No, not the.
I've never used chipping.
This was a different meeting. You said only 20% of people use the service.
I don't think I ever did.
Okay.
Because I don't have the numbers.
I can tell you did once.
I have never used.
I know you did once.
Yes, you did.
Okay. So that's not the point. The point is, it was said that, Mr. Cannon said that 20% of the people use service. Well, there's 20% that use different services around here. That doesn't mean we eliminate them, right? When I look at, when we say bundle, you know, if you've got a tree limb, who really has the time or the equipment to cut and bundle? But when you said 96-gallon container, wasn't there a fee for that container?
The container is a one-time fee of $85.
Okay, because I didn't see that up there, so I just wanted to make mention of that. I asked Ms. Heine, Mary Heine, our finance director, about this splash pad maintenance, and I think, and I don't want to quote her, I want to say, and I can go back in the email, I want to say it was like $40,000 complete when it's, when you're talking, we don't have, we don't charge anything for that. And again, only 20% of the people use it. So I guess I'm wondering, why are we using, charging for other things? And not that I want to be charged for, but my daughter does go there. I wouldn't mind paying a one-time fee every month, I mean, every year, to have her go to the splash pad. But that will offset some of this $50,000, I'm sure, when we look at cost. We still do, like you said, we, we're out in the parks, which the parks are beautiful, well-kept, I appreciate that. You guys do a phenomenal job, I just want to tell you that.
Thank you.
But when you say we're out there 15 times a year, or?
15 to 20 days a year is what we need to be in the parks, taking care of our own trees and so forth.
Do a great job. I'm just looking as a homeowner, I'm not, you know, I'm not knocking those who don't own homes. I'm looking at it from a homeowner's standpoint. I pay taxes. I moved to Clinton Township because of the amenities, because of the services I was receiving. I don't look at it as, when I look at my tax bill, I know people say it's high, but I look and say, I'm getting my tree chipping, I'm receiving, you know, fire, police, EMS. I know those things are there, and it might not seem like a lot for some people who might have the money, not being funny, who might have the money that could just pay for theirs. I really don't. I have two sons that own their home in Clinton Township. They wanted to stay here because of their amenities, and they bought their home themselves. And yet, this is another burden on them as well. And it's not just my family, it's other people even in the community. So when I look at taking that away, I'm going to still go, I am going to say, no, we're not taking this away. How we can make this right, or how we, what we choose to offset some of this cost, I'll be willing to bargain on, but taking it away, not as a taxpayer, I just couldn't think of doing that.
And by the way, that's how you voted before?
And I'll state it that way.
Yeah, that's fine. Yes, sir.
Just a point of correction and clarification. It was the January 22 meeting when the board voted the chipping down, not February.
Thank you.
As far as clarification goes, she did an excellent job of showing how the money is there. The money comes out of the sanitation fund, correct?
$250,000 comes from the sanitation fund, and the equipment that we would need to buy in the future, the 60, the $600,000 would also have to come out of the sanitation fund.
Okay, glad you brought that up. As far as updating the equipment, whose responsibility has that been over the last 12 or 16 years to maybe add a new piece of equipment every other year or something like that? Why all of a sudden are we dealing with a perceived crisis, an equipment crisis, when?
So I would argue, it's not, it's a five-year projection. Clinton Township has always taken the approach of you use your equipment until you have a problem, and then you have a five-year projection. So we've been looking at this. Every year, I look at it for five years and say, do I think? So at this point, we do believe that we need to correct, we need to replace these over the next five years. You'll notice that we actually are doing it over five years. If you go back to when the equipment was bought, you'll see that it was bought in 2006 and in 2007, all the trucks. I'm actually trying to spread the trucks out, so that in the future, that would not happen, that they all come do it at the same time. So I'm actually trying to do exactly what you're saying, and that is spread it out and take care of it from there.
Okay, with regards to the equipment, again, as far as mileage goes, that's just, that's just going through the streets of Clinton Township, maybe going somewhere to dump the chips and that sort of thing. The hours on the chippers, anybody who's ever been on Moravian or a side street knows that they're idling as they, as they go past your house to the next pile. They don't shut the machine off, start back up. So the, the, the number of hours isn't severe duty for X amount of hours, it's mostly idle time, they, they raise the RPMs to do the chipping, and they go on to the next one. So I don't think the hours on the machines are concerning, I think they're all safe. I mean, there's, I've owned chippers before, I've operated chippers. I mean, either it has safety equipment or it doesn't. So as far as, I don't want to scare anybody into thinking that the, the equipment is scary or dangerous for our employees, because it isn't. I mean, it's, it's safe equipment. I have, I have a real issue with, with these two, these two slides, let's say. Projects DPW has, have taken on and projects DPW could take on. So it seems like pet projects are taking our employee, our staff, our monies away to do, like she said, Bonyard Tree Parking. We, for some reason, we're going to go in the concrete business and pour our own concrete. I just think it's, it's a terrible misappropriation of funds that we're there for the chipping service that's been longstanding for over 30 years. I can see that there's probably efficiencies. When you mentioned the plans, if we had to, if we had to decide on a plan, the half-a-year plan from May to September, or maybe extended May to October, and I know that she touched on the cost savings, if we did a half-a-year, right now, it's costing between $250, or $250 from the sanitation fund, correct? And then occasionally, we tap into the general fund for overtime and that sort of thing, which is another 50. So if we, if we cut it down to half a year, I still think we can, we can run the program within, within the $250,000, not have to touch the general fund money, and use the money that's been set aside and intended for chipping to continue chipping. And that's, like I said, if I, if I had to, if I had to vote for anything today, it would be for the six months, which is the, has the closest resemblance to what people are accustomed to. I think it's terrible to put a deadline on it for two times a year, where they have to go out in the, in the rainy April months and get it out by a certain date, or else it's going to sit in their yard until the fall. I, I don't see, I don't see a need from, for October through the winter months. Christmas trees, maybe we can do a drop-off program or something like that. And then storm events, obviously, we can do that. But I, I would like to see it, I mean, if, if we have to make changes for the sake of efficiency, I think we should do half a year and maybe extend it even more than six months to accommodate our residents and our citizens' taxpayers. Thank you.
Further comments from the board? From the board? Remember what this is. This is the board discussing and possibly making a change as to what has been already voted on. It's, I will accept comments, but we're not going to discuss with the public. It's a discussion among the board members. So, Mrs. Bednar, are you completed with your project?
I am.
Okay, we had Dana back there lined up for a long time, he's probably getting Nancy feet. Come on, Dana.
Mr. Cannon, I'm going to come sit up here.
Of course.
Dana Dugger, from 37852 Suburban, in the best neighborhood in this township, in the east-southern portion of the township. Good evening to the board and fellow residents. The storm of our neighborhood endured on May 7th provided a vivid example of why we need to restore the level of service you took away from us several months ago. While the damage was concentrated on a few blocks, there were 25 sites with tree and/or structural damage. Of these sites, homeowners looked after 15 of them. I personally assisted in creating brush piles six feet high, totaling over 40 feet in length, with materials up to 10 inches in diameter. I sent invitations to each of you to come and view the damage. And I asked through the chair, a show of hands, who of you came out and looked?
I can tell you, our DPW department did, and they came back with a report. Thank you.
I sent the.
They did.
The invitation to each board member.
Every board member got a copy of that report.
If you did not tour our area, if you did tour our area, you would have quickly saw your current option for bundling these amounts of debris for GFL is a ridiculous and unworkable option. Fortunately, the storm was before your May 13 discontinuation of chiper service. Please note, while this damage created a lot of work for residents, it would not have met your published definition of an emergency weather event, which would have allowed temporary restoration of chipping. The outline I just. The outline I just stated should be reason enough to restore our service. I move on. A lengthy itemization of cost, equipment age, and hours was presented to support the claimed cost of service. Curiously, the length of projects that could be done if we do not chip had no cost assigned to any of the items on the west, on the wish list. The board should have been provided with this information so an informed decision could be made. The omission of these costs makes it very clear, this is not about saving money, it is about spending the chipper money and much more on other projects. There was also a totally irrelevant list of past projects presented, again, with no dollar values attached. The presentation made here tonight is very biased. It is clear the intent is to deprive residents of the service we've had for over 50 years. None of the options presented gives us the service we need. The pros and cons list, interestingly enough, one of the pros that was listed to the budget ways and means was that this would support commercial operators. I'm glad to see that dropped off the pro. You're elected to serve residents, not commercial operators. Regarding the item of the mowing and snow removal on the bike trails, I asked this board to go back and review the minutes of the January 5, 2015, uh, board meeting when we first entered our contract with H C M A for snow removal and plowing. At that time, our DPS director stated the cost of providing these services could not be determined due to having to purchase equipment and the potential for overtime of having clear snow on a Sunday. What has changed for us to consider bringing this back? We need to put this service out for bids before this contract expires in 2020, March of 2025. Touching on the bond your tree, why this board would siphon funds from our much-needed chipping service to dump more money for an unneeded feature at this site while claiming fiscal responsibility is beyond comprehension. The sidewalk project throughout the sidewalk, we have a special assessment process for funding sidewalks where, uh, residents may desire them. And would we not be doing a disservice to cement contractors to go in the sidewalk business? Same with the civic center parking lot ceiling. Why are we not bidding that out? What's the cost of that? What's the savings? Are we just doing a disservice to the parking lot maintaining people? Getting into your equipment, optimal equipment life is achieved by diligent maintenance. I asked this board, has there been an audit of maintenance record to assure we are optimizing the life of our fleet by providing the absolute best maintenance and keeping record of that? Our presentation mentions trucks that are 17 to eight year, 18 years old with as little as 62,000 miles. Again, equipment life is not only about age, it's about maintenance. I've researched this. My research caused me to learn that UPS trucks are expected to last between 25 and 30 years with several hundreds of thousands of miles on them, getting much more abusive use than our low-speed, uh, medium duties that are assigned to this project. My research also led me to an article in a magazine called Tree Care Industry Magazine, which mentioned commercial operators getting as much as 30 years and 8,000 hours out of a chipper. It also highlighted the option of having a chipper refurbished at about half the cost of buying a new machine. This is offered by the manufacturer of our chippers, Morbark. Have we ever examined this? Touching on Mr. Kress's mention there, uh, perhaps we can get our high-hour machine refurbished while we use the one with only 975 hours on it. Even our high-hour machines have an average of $400 per year. They should be good for at least another three years without even a refurb. And noting that the machines do run all day, that is good for the machine. Idle time is not abusive time. It's better than starting and stopping them. But the hours accumulate as long as the ignition is on. Lastly, some more board members mentioned that chipping service that we all pay for, we do not use. I remind you, this is true of many government services. Example, senior services, parks, recreation programs, library, bus service, DIA. While we do not use these services, I may not use them, they are a benefit to the community, just like the chipping is a benefit to the community. That is the synopsis. One thing I'd also like to touch on, at the last meeting, I questioned why we did not advertise the discontinuation of our chipper service with great vigor. Why was it not on the front page of our website? Why was it not on our channel, our cable channel? The answer I got was, we put it on the water bill and it's on our website. It's on the website, five clicks deep. It went on the water bill as one sentence saying, this is going to change. You didn't have the stamina enough to come out and say, and put it on the front page of the website, hey, residents, we took this away from you. If you're going to make a decision, stand up. Don't do it without, if you've got the fortitude to make the decision, advertise it. Let us know. Thank you very much for your time, board.
Thank you. Sir, there, there was someone in front of you.
Was there?
George.
No, you go. Oh, wait, you go. Is there, is there something wrong with that? He doesn't want to hear from me. Uh, there again, I think what everybody has to understand is, this is covered under our sanitation fund, which is on our water and sewer bill, which at the, at the, at the budget ways and means, there was some question about that, and because it's a line item on there. Well, yes, it's our, we are paying it separate. It's not part of our taxes. And so out of the $300,000 bill, that $250,000 was paid from the sanitation billing. If you take the, uh, the fact, if you go to the six-month service, the part-year service, and it saves 70%, which is kind of wild that it wouldn't say 50%, but 70% is, that would still bring the total cost down to 210,000, which would be well below what the sanitation fund is already paying. And the general fund would be home-free. And there again, because this is a sanitation fund, and because we have a, a community with a lot of trees, when them trees fall into, into ditches, onto roads, uh, they're again, get stacked up and they, they screw up the drains, well, that is bad for the sanitation. And I think it just, it's a matter of, it's short-sighted this to, to just get rid of the service. Then you have the fact that out of the sanitation fund, instead of doing the chipping service, which actually is a sanitation function, we're going to end up having parking lots paved, and we're going to have a new, new thing up at the bond your trail, and there again, a cement pad to put up a tent behind the senior citizen center. All of this, all of the projects that were listed have nothing to do with sanitation. The chipping service does have something to do with sanitation. So we're paying this bill. We know it's for sanitation. The other stuff isn't sanitation. I think you, and I want to really thank trustees, Kress, and Patton for bringing, you know, keeping this alive, because you were the only two, and I just took some abuse along the way to get it to here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, sir?
Yes, um, I'm James Smith. I live at 36625 Moravian Drive, right on Moravian. Just this week, to answer the question, uh, matter of fact, it was today, the chipper came by. Uh, we're all set on Moravian. I saw it myself. Those guys were there for nine minutes, and I had my whole front of my street lined up. I just want to say, I understand that budgets are tight. I understand, so is mine. I understand that there's limited increases with where these funds are coming from. I had no idea where they were coming from, from the, from sewage, uh, costs. Costs are, are, are up. Personnel, everybody's hours are, costs are up. The cost of maintenance of the equipment is up. It's very important to have safety equipment, safely-run equipment. I'm very happy to hear that. I'm also very, very happy to hear that, um, Mrs. Patton and Mr. Kress have stood up for this. I want to give them a, a pause for, for, for this very basic service. I've been a longtime resident of Clinton Township for 11 years now, and this is critical for me to be able to keep up my property. I did a big improvement in a renovation in 2016 and was taxed much higher than I was comfortable with. It's very important for the taxes to be aligned. It's very important for the basic services, essential basic services of this township to continue. Personally, I don't agree with the one fellow that said that they had to go for all year, because that's the only way we can have it. I think it should be available for at least six months. It gives us an opportunity to continue using it. I have no means of being able to take all of the stuff except for what will fit in those bins at four-foot bundles. To take it up and make an appointment, that takes a lot more of my time, takes my equipment for me to be able to get it up there, takes my time to get it. It's, it's unacceptable. Uh, this service must continue. It's about as far as I can say.
George Westerman, 42999 Little Road, Clinton Township. Obviously, I've been here before. I know most of you. Um, I, I do agree with the last gentleman that spoke, that if it is inevitable that this board has to make some kind of a compromise, um, the six months would certainly be better than nothing, because it still allows that service to continue. It gives people fair notice, uh, of that, that time period. Um, I'm sure that it would ease cost in some way. And although personally, I would prefer, and I, I believe still because of my experience in the past as the Director of Public Works, that it's a doable service, um, I would, uh, I would agree that the six-month would certainly be a, a, a wonderful compromise to the plan. Mr. Cannon, I, I remember, and you may recall, in 2009, um, you, you talked to me about a problem that had developed in another department, and that, that it was time to, uh, we all had to kind of bite the bullet, and we had to take on additional services and work harder for less. And, and I did that. I did that at that time, and I did it for 18 months. And I think that we're at that time now. And I, I think that there's, there's ways that this board could look within, um, the, the current, uh, uh, level of employees within the township and make a determination as to those that are necessary and those that aren't. I don't believe that's been done for a long time. But when it comes down to ultimately serving the community, um, that's really what your obligation is. And it, the, the chipping service, although it's, um, you know, in the past, because of my comments here and at the Ways and Means meeting, the passion that I feel for it, I wasn't going to come tonight. Uh, I thought, no, I've, I've said everything that I needed to say. Uh, but the fact that it's on here and that there were these, these different options, it gave me hope, quite honestly. It gave me hope that the other five members of the board that, um, were committed to voting, uh, uh, no to, uh, to continuation, that, uh, there, there might be a change. And so that's why I'm here. I'm here to encourage that, to encourage you to do that, to vote for that compromise, to not remove this service. Um, there's, there's some things I, I, I've been fighting within myself to, to say or not say, and I thought, no, I'd rather not say them than regret saying them afterwards. But, um, Mr. Cannon, it is a time for sacrifice. And I think that when, when we have a, a, a problem that, that comes in front of us like this within the community, that involves so much of the community, a service that has been so valuable an amenity, uh, that trustee Patton has pointed out that her children are now enjoying. When something like that comes, we need to take a serious notice of it. Um, and I would like to caution you too on the, uh, the description of the, uh, the storm qualifier that would generate the trippers, uh, chippers. Um, the FEMA qualification is pretty dramatic. Uh, the, uh, the section that Mr. Dugger referred to, or the storm that Mr. Dugger referred to, um, although it was isolated at that time, in my, my 30 years within the township, we saw this many times in isolated areas where those kinds of, of wind shears occurred and caused quite a bit of problems for the people. So I, I would encourage you, uh, to vote for a continuation of some sort. And, and I think out of all of the options that have been presented, if it is inevitable that, that an option B rather, uh, against there being no chipping at all, then I would encourage you to vote for the, the six-month, because at that point, you're still being true to the residents. And I, I know it, it might irritate some of you for me to remind you, uh, that you're here to serve the residents. I, I know that you know that. Um, but it, but it's something, again, as Mr. Dugger pointed out, this hasn't been publicized. And when I worked in the township, something like this would have been advertised. The township would have been made aware that the board was considering something like this. Um, and, and the fact that it hasn't been done that way, while I, you know, there's different opinions on that, but, um, I, I do respectfully, uh, request that you would reconsider, uh, and especially the notion of the six-month, uh, time period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Fliss, 23879 Glenwood. Had a lot of problems after the big storm. We've been in the neighborhood 50.
54 years. 53 years.
53 years. We've had the chipper out a lot of times. This time when I called, I was told, oh, it'll be coming down your block. Be patient, be patient. Week and a half later, I called again, oh, it's at the north end. Be patient. Last time I called, it was, well, they were down their street, out down your street just yesterday. I said, then why are all them branches still sitting out there on my front lawn? With 12 inches of grass growing in between all them branches. We need the chipper. I'm 100% disabled veteran. I have trouble walking across the street now to get the mail. And I'll tell you what, getting to be 78 years old is a pain. It really is. Now, I'm going to let my better half, my Speaker of the House, say, hurt you since when.
Thank you for your service. Senator Fliss, just was going to reiterate what he said about the, the, the branches are still there. On our way over here, I noticed between Glenwood and Fierce, there were at least three piles of, of branches still sitting on the sides of the road off of Harper. They haven't been touched. I just, my concern is I was, it hasn't been addressed. I understand that GFL has sold our contract to Priority, to another trash company. How is that going to affect what we're talking about tonight? Are there policies in line with GFL, or are they different? That was my question.
Thank you. Sir, you got a comment? No, fellow behind you. Same color shirt.
I know. You got your badge. He's taller.
Jeffrey Brown, 19838 Woodview. To follow up with, with the, the woman there with the Priority Waste, um, taking over the, the contracts, I don't know if you guys have been doing any reading and priorities real strict on all their containers and what you can put out. And I don't know how, um, at this point, I don't know how they deal with the Christmas trees, but, uh, uh, which, until tonight, nobody had mentioned Christmas trees at all in this whole issue, which I thought should have been mentioned too. But I was concerned now how you guys, you just got found out last week that the, the GFL was sold, and now how the contract between the township and, and Priority will work its way out and, and that whole thing, because they're supposed to be really strict, I guess. If it's not in the container, it's not getting picked up, from what I've seen in Sterling Heights, and some of the news articles talked about Northville and Northville Township having issues too with Priority, and some of the places in Oakland County.
My name is Paul Shorsh, Ultra-Mega Precinct Delegate of McComb County, and I'm with the real Republican Party. And, uh, I just want to go with the six-month plan, if you guys would vote on that. And is this the part where? And is this the part where you get the public comment on other things?
No.
Okay, I'll wait till that...
That's the end of the meeting. All we're doing is receiving your information, and we're not responding to what you're saying because it would go forever.
If we could go with at least six months with that, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. The township board has an item that we voted on months ago, and right now, chipping is going to be eliminated except for emergencies and except for certain times when the DPW has to be out doing it. But one of the things I can tell you, chipping has been good. But when people put their branches out and they have a party on Saturday, they call my office and say, it's Tuesday, I got a party on Saturday. When's the chipper going to be here? We don't have that many chippers that can be on demand. And that's one of the reasons, in fact, I'm not going to respond because it's not appropriate right now. We in the past have talked about charging people for chipping, the people that use the service. It didn't go anywhere because people in the departments at the time didn't want to do it. Right now, this board can change their opinion if they wish. They've had input from a few residents. There are 100,000 people who live plus in Clinton Township, and there probably are 20 people speaking against getting rid of chipping here tonight, which is fine. You're representative of a part of the township. But there are a lot of people who are not represented here that also have an opinion that weigh upon this board. So this board has the ability tonight, right now, if they choose to make a motion to rescind what we did, and I forget the date, and change what we did. But first, we have to rescind it. Excuse me one second, please. Mr. Dolan?
Yes, sir.
We cannot just rescind it. Someone who voted against has to bring it forward.
Well, actually, this is at a different meeting. And I will look at rescind again, but I believe that because we're at a different meeting, that it can be brought to...
I think that one who...
Well, we can...
See, I don't think, Mrs. Patton's the only one who voted to save it at the time, not change it. So you can't bring it forward because I think that's a standard.
Mr. Cannon, you're thinking of a motion to reconsider.
It's a separate meeting.
This is a motion to rescind. So it doesn't have those same limitations.
I'm not sure.
It's a... Rescind is a...
The last time I asked, I was right.
No, I still stand.
I was right.
I'm about to... Yeah, it doesn't need a, one of the...
So anyone can bring it forward.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Mr. Kress, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to reinstate the chipping service using the six-month option from May 1st to September 30th.
And I'd like to support that.
Is that option four? There was option four.
I don't know what option that was.
Was that the last one?
No, it wasn't the last one.
Which one was that one there?
Option two.
Option two?
It's near the beginning.
Yes, option two.
It was two.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Yes, speak to the...
Of course.
To the motion. I am not opposed to chipping, but I also can hold two thoughts in my head at the same time, and one has to do with the general fund budget, which is shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. My turn to speak. And so we have been working, no one is like hell-bent on ending chipping. And so we spent two months listening to people's comments, and we have crafted some compromise positions which were presented today. I don't have a problem with the six months, but I do really have a problem with anyone that comes in front of us about any service that says to me, we have to keep doing something the same way we've always done it because that's the way we've always done it. We need to be examining every single budget item, program, department, because our general fund is shrinking. And pretty soon, that ends us in a place where we don't want to be, where we're laying off staff, we're closing the senior center, we're closing down the rec department. Nobody wants to be there. We like living in Clinton Township because it has lots of amenities. So figuring out a compromise is not a horrible thing. It's a good thing. I fully intend to vote for this compromise because it makes sense, but it accomplishes two things. Hopefully, we will do this service better because I heard lots of you complain about how this service has been operating. And number two, it saves us some general fund money, which is really critical. And that's what this process is about. The sense I got that some people are for us and some people are against us, and we're all trying to do the same thing here, which is to save the township money, to provide efficient services, and to make it a really nice place to live. And sometimes that takes months to figure out compromises and do research. And so I don't think reaching a compromise is a bad thing. I think if people want chipping, they can have chipping. I've never lived in a place that had chipping before. But, okay, you know, let's vote on this. I'm done talking about it.
Mr. Cannon, I do need clarification.
On the six-month service, there was actually two parts to it. There was the May 1st to September 30th, which would only do subdivision streets because it would be a two-person crew. To make it budget neutral, we would do May 15th to August 31st, which would allow us to do the main streets as well, which would be like Moravee and Little Road. I want clarification because if we pick, if we do the May 1st to September 30th and we do the main streets, then you're not, then you're not looking at the same numbers. We're going to actually have more crews out or more people out.
So you said it's the, which one for making sure we do the main streets as well?
It would be May 15th to August 31st.
Would you reiterate?
I'm going to keep my motion as is.
That's four months, though.
As is.
Mary, that's just four months, right?
That's making it budget neutral 50% because we have to have four people, and it's a whole week that we're on the main streets, like Glenwood is a main street, as well as Moravee and Little Road.
I'm not going to change my motion.
Mr. Speaker.
I'm not going to change my motion. It's six months and all streets, all streets as we have done in the past.
Including main streets.
From May 1st to September 30th, we have the personnel, we have the monies. And that's my motion.
You got to say including main streets.
Mr. Gilliam?
Thank you. Part of our problem here is we had an eight-week backlog last year on chipping service. If we are offering chipping service during that time period, are people okay with a six-to-eight-week backlog? So, of course, it's better than nothing, but there are other compromises. Personally, from the meeting, I believe that a spring collection and a fall collection makes the most amount of sense because it's a finite time. It's a time when the trees are supposed to be trimmed in the first place. And so that would be, I think, a better compromise.
And that's option four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And by the way...
That's not the motion we're working on.
It's not the motion we're...
I understand...
But he can, he can bring that up.
Most definitely, yeah.
And I agree with you, Mr. Gilliam. I think that would be a far better option. I think it would give our residents more hope that their branches are going to be chipped in a quicker fashion than they are not. We can't keep up. We cannot keep up with our DPW with the branches that we have in Clinton Township. Luckily, we have a lot of trees.
It's my intention to offer that as a motion if I have the opportunity.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, and you can also make a motion.
I don't want to amend the motion. I'm just going to...
You do that all the time. So don't tell me you don't want to. Mrs. Patton?
I like the six-month option. It was said over and over again from our community that this didn't get out, right? So imagine having the service and it not getting out. So people are going to have branches that normally, they pull them anyway. And I know my next-door neighbor has branches sitting there where a duck came and left, put the, you know, put a nest there for her eggs. So those branches stayed there. So now I'm thinking, what other, what else are we going to get? Are we going to get mice, rats? What are we going to get when these branches are just sitting there? Because of this, what Mr. Gilliam said was a backlog, but my understanding is in January, the backlog came from us knowing we were doing trees trimmed or picking up trees that we shouldn't have because someone was using a service, commercial service, and putting them there, and we kept going back to trim them or pick them up. We shouldn't have been doing that in the first place, and if you knew it, we should have stopped that. So that put the residents, the actual residents that are paying taxes, behind. So for that, I say we need to do six months because, again, this is going to, we're going to get cited, oh, your grass is too high, oh, the branches are there. And then we don't save any money. If anything, we're coming out of pocket because we don't have another alternative to these branches. And I'm just, I might be speaking for myself, I might be speaking for someone else, but I know having those, again, a disabled veteran, so thank you for your service, I know having that service is extremely important. Whether you use it or not, it's there. The police are there, but not everybody uses the police. The fire is there. Not everybody can say they called fire. MedStar is there. Some of us never use MedStar, but it's there because we need it. And when we need it, we know it's there to utilize, and that's how we should look at this right now.
I mean, we all, I agree with Mr. Gilliam. I think that the plan that was brought forward would be a good plan, would give people a reasonable amount of time to get their chipping out and get it done. So we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Keys?
In a second.
We'll go to Mr. Keys. You've already had your comments.
It's a new motion, ma'am.
No. We have Mr. Key.
Rock and Roll says the public gets a chance to speak. It was a new motion.
Mr. Westerman, you got to speak. You got to speak. Every time you come, you get to speak. Mr. Keys, you have the floor.
I'm not going to take up too much time here. I agree with what trustee Matusak said. She articulated it very well, that there is not a them versus us when it comes to the issue of chipping. But certainly in Clinton Township, when I first got elected, all I ever heard about was the days of Mr. Cannon and Mr. Sauerby having to make very tough decisions in laying staff off to keep this community afloat. And the reality is, I do not want to hand off to the next trustee or the next board members a situation what we have today, where we are spending more than we take in in the senior department, spending more than we take in in Parks and Recreation, spending more than we take in providing services like chipping. We have to be creative. We have to think differently, and we cannot just come up with the fact that we've done it this way before is the only way we'll provide that service again. So I really want to commend the DPS staff that sat down with us after the last township board meeting where this was added to the agenda without any backup or any actual plan. We sat down with DPS, myself, Treasurer Gilliam, and trustee Matusak and said, what are options that you can actually put to paper, submit to Budget Ways and Means, and bring back to the township board? Because what we're seeing today is how this is supposed to work. It's not in a back room. There's not a conversation being had outside of the ears of the public. Instead, the positions of the department and the board member are being brought to the township board, and we're able to have a debate and vote on them. So I will be voting in favor of one of the compromises. I too favor the compromise. I believe it's listed number four, so I believe we have a different motion on the table now. But I wanted to at least articulate how I see the issue. So thank you, Mr. Cannon.
You do have the option to bring it forward if you want to.
So we have a motion on the floor?
We do, but there could be another motion.
No, we should deal with the one that's there.
I make a motion to amend the current motion to utilize option four.
Then I make a motion to amend the current, your motion.
No, no. Excuse me, Mrs. Patton, you're not, you're out of order. You're out of order. He is not. He had every right to make that motion. Excuse me, sir. You'll be removed if you keep on. She will not be removed. She has a right to speak. You don't at this time. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a support to the motion?
I'm confused.
He wants option four. Option four means that we're going to pick them up in the spring, we're going to pick them up in the fall with a definite time period. And that was thought out by multiple people, including the DPW staff, DPS staff, and in looking over the report, I think that's a good option, too. It will give us the ability to try to keep up because we can't keep up. We've got too many trees and not enough people to chip all the branches. Because nobody wants to pay to have it chipped. We've been doing it for years. Somebody said 50. I don't know. I know at least 40. That's fine.
Mr. Cannon?
Is there a second to Mr. Gilliam's motion?
Mr. Cannon?
No, excuse me. Mrs. Melzer, we need a support, and then we would vote on Mr. Gilliam's motion. Option four.
No, his motion is to amend. If it's a favorable vote to amend, then we vote on the amended motion. So it's two votes.
I will support that motion. I think it's a good motion. I think we have an opportunity to do what's right for the community and, as Mrs. Matusak said, to try to balance some of the budgets that we're going to have to reconsider as time goes on. The monies aren't coming in like they used to, and they're not going to. Somehow, we have to pay for everything we want in our township. Everybody likes chipping. Everybody likes chipping. I was afraid of not having chipping because of people taking their branches and throwing them in somebody else's front yard. That was my big fear. Biggest fear. So anyway, I support your motion. We need a roll call on that.
Okay, just one more time clarification here. What is, what is the motion we're voting on now?
To amend the previous motion that was made and supported by Mr. Kress. And the amendment will be to amend the item to come back if successful after amendment and be voted on, which is option number four.
Is this a substitute motion? Is that what this is?
Yes.
In a way, it is.
Motion to amend by substitution.
Okay, so this is a motion to amend by substituting Plan Four for Plan Two.
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. It's complicated.
Roll call, please.
Treasurer Gilliam?
This is not up for debate, sir.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
I know. Still thinking here. I'm going to vote no.
No.
You voted no?
Wait, 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 wait.
I voted no.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Mr. Keys.
Yeah, I said no.
Oh, trustee Keys, I hadn't called your name. Okay, no. You voted no also?
Yes.
Because I got to make this, trustee Patton?
No.
Wait, wait, we're not done. Who's that? Me.
Please, you don't need to...
Motion passes.
You missed Kress.
Oh, Mr. Kress, yes. No, okay. Motion, motion. Actually, it actually fails. So it's five to two.
We're back to the Kress.
Back to mine. Okay, vote.
All right, trustee Kress?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon? Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes.
You forgot Gilliam.
You forgot Mr. Gilliam.
Okay, you know what? I thought you made the second. Oh, no, that was the first one. Okay. All right, good.
Okay.
So now we have a six-month chipping service.
I'm sorry?
Item 12, adoption of conflict of interest policy and administration of federal funds.
Mr. Cannon, if Mr. Gilliam would like to speak to this, that would, as opposed to me reading everything, I don't know that we need to do that.
So last meeting, there was an instance where an application was received by the planning department. It turns out that that applicant was not eligible because of a relationship with somebody who has administrative capacity over the program. That is a violation of HUD rules, and we are not allowed to spend federal money as a result of that familiar relationship. So what this does is create a policy that says no money can be expended on these programs until that there is a specific disclosure form filled out by the applicant disclosing who they might or might not be, actually, who they might be related to within the township. And only then can we spend funds. We will not be able to spend funds prior to determining eligibility or, for that matter, ineligible. So that is what this policy does, and there's the... this policy does, and there's the policy that was included, as well as a disclosure form that will be added to the application process.
Mr. Cannon?
So I move support of that, and if it's seconded, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you're, okay, I'll second that. And just wanted to say, yeah, this, this definitely needs to be done. It's good policy for us, so it, you know, it levels the board and makes things very transparent. It's what's done at the level, the federal level, so I should just be in compliance with that. So I will second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Oh, Mr. Cannon, just quickly, just as a note for other board members, I do think this is really important, actually. As a, you know, board member, when COVID happened, there were a lot of different relief programs out there, even from here, from the township. My mom and dad both working as waitresses and chefs, you know, were out of work and really struggled. And we, I actually, you know, reached out to the township to see, would they even qualify for this programming, knowing that I was in this seat? And the answer I got back was just no. There is no way to do it. And so, to, to find that there, you know, we have found a way, we just need to make sure that we're above board and completely transparent about it. I think that's a real benefit, because, you know, these programs, whether it's our employees or board members, we have families that want to be able to access them. And it's, again, as long as it's transparent and above board, it's a good thing. So I'm, I'll be supporting this.
Roll call.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 13.
This commission has made review of proposed rezoning request from B2 Community Business to B3 General Business, and has voted to recommend approval of the petition's request. This action was supported, by?
Planning.
By a majority vote. Well, no, I wanted to, just because there were nays. And this matter was petitioned by Justin Lark Chick-fil-A Inc., as represented by Leslie Accardo PEA Group. Sincerely, George Sassen, Clinton Township Planning Commission. Mr. Cannon, I also want to let the public know, I mean, I, I know that the public here is gonna have a chance to speak, but I also want to let you know that there were, at the last time I looked, I think it was right around four o'clock, there was a petition in the Rivergate subdivision, and there were 244 people in opposition to this development, for the record.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
I would love to hear from the petitioner, and I would also like to hear a summation of the, the planning commission discussion that couldn't decide.
On this particular one, they did, we did decide, and we moved this forward.
Okay.
Approved for the zoning, rezoning.
Okay.
So that was not an issue.
All right. It's the other one that's an issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, it's asking for like a password.
Huh? It's, yeah, I, I'll get it.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was just gonna pull the presentation up here.
So, so because there was no opposition to the rezoning, is it possible to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
To approve the rezoning?
It is.
I'll make a motion for approval. We didn't have a problem with that.
I would support that. I mean, if, if that's not the controversial part, that's, I'm in favor.
The site plan is the?
Right.
It's not site plan, it's the special land.
Mr. Kress?
I wish I could quote the, the board meetings where you spoke, Mr. Cannon, the people buying property, knowing it's the wrong zoning, and then assuming that we're gonna rezone it for them. There's been instances on grossback and that sort of thing. And just, just recently we had, what is it, trans, tri-county, tri-county transportation, who owned a piece of property, who wanted a conditional rezoning, and you were adamant that he couldn't have it, even though the, the planning committee said, they recommended that they do the rezoning. I, I don't, I don't understand why we're picking and choosing who we can rezone for and who we can't rezone for. This is a, this is a new person buying this property, whereas that gentleman Fred Meansick, or Meansick, Meanski, or something like that?
Neinste.
Had the property for, for over, well over a decade. And we didn't allow that. I, buying the property, knowing it's the wrong zoning, assuming we're gonna rezone it for an enterprise they want to go into. I'm all, I'm pro-business, and, and I wish everyone the best in their, in their ventures. But buying something that isn't correct for what they want to do, and then putting it on our shoulders to rezone it against the will of Rivergate and, and anybody who drives north on, on Romeo Plank, and I, I don't understand. I don't understand why, why this is even being considered when you, when you're hard line against some people, but in an instance like this, it's, it's, you can consider it.
Thank you for your thoughts. Further comments of the board members? This is on, on item 13, the?
Res zoning.
The rezoning. Sir, I will hear your comments.
Sam Bushel, 1-8546, Wayland Drive. In all actuality, the rezoning was controversial also. It was a five to three vote, with our commissioner that lives in Oakland County and gets to Clinton Township, he said, two times a week, making the deciding vote to approve this. The people in the audience were so upset, and many of them left, and you can watch the video of the meeting and find that out. And now you have a petition signed by 244 homeowners. I can't even imagine why, on this extremely busy corner, and from what I understand, the biggest, the most accidents in all of Clinton Township, you would decide to up this for somebody that bought the property there again, hoping to rezone it, and gosh only knows what they felt would, would happen there. But to say this was not controversial, many citizens left the meeting and they were upset. And in fact, one of the things said, well, just remember, there's an election coming, and that changed the second vote. Thank you.
Sir, you had something you wanted to say?
Daniel Ewing, Rivergate, 44781, Rivergate Drive. I appreciate your time. We moved in about three years ago, not really thinking about the detriment that the traffic alone would cause to our property values and, and enjoyment. We cannot go outside without hearing Hellcats, and Ford Camaros, and everything else on 59, as it is racing at all hours of the, of the evening, cutting through our subdivision at 40 miles an hour, clocked and timed, reported to the police, and yet, we still have all these issues. And now we're going to add Chick-fil-A. I love Chick-fil-A. I worked for Chick-fil-A in high, or in college and in high school, in Florida, in, in Tallahassee, Panama City. But that location's not good. It's not a good location for Chick-fil-A. And as a Chick-fil-A value holder, I, I value their values. It's not a good location for families. It's not a good location for you to, to bring brand recognition, because there are going to be problems with traffic. There are going to be problems with people. There are going to be problems caused by this location. There's lots of open property further east.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon, Mr. Cannon, I know you've opened it up to the public, but we haven't heard from the people that have, you know, that are here. I think there's some people for the traffic study.
They'll have an opportunity, because we thought this was not going to be controversy to this part, because it passed easily at the planning commission. So we'll, we'll hear them.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name's Jerry Miller. I'm the president of Rivergate. I love Chick-fil-A. If you haven't had their hot?
Okay.
Chocolate chip cookie, it's awesome. I want to speak against the idea of having a?
You and I have friends.
I know, I know.
Come on, let's go.
No Chick-fil-A. Correction, we have 267 of us that have signed the petition as of the time of this meeting. So, it's just a bad idea.
And how many people live in, in the South?
We have a thousand homes.
More, more than a thousand?
Yeah, 1,038.
I mean, I get, I get it.
Yeah, but, so, yeah. That's basically it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
So Jerry and I have known each other for a long time. Sir?
Thank you. Fred, Fred Neinste, 41362, Justin Drive. Y'all know that as a cut-through from Canal to 18 mile road, so I really don't want to hear about cut-through traffic. Is there an opportunity for the township board to do a traffic study and actually document the risk to the public?
That's coming up.
Thank you, sir.
The petitioner has a traffic study, and should have presented it at the planning commission.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll speak.
You can be next.
Hello, Steve Brostik, 43304, Mariner Court, Rivergate. I'm a part of the other 800-plus who don't oppose Chick-fil-A. And this is a part of what I call the Clinton Township angst that we keep coming up against. First, I want to remind you all, I have a little fuzzy on the dates, and these events happened before all of you were here, but maybe Mr. Cannon. But while I'm fuzzy, I do remember a event of when Walmart wanted to come in at Romeo Plank and Hall Road, and the same things were said then, oh, the traffic, oh, the issues, we can't tolerate this. This is a change we cannot bear. Well, Walmart said, I'm not gonna have that, and they took you to court, and they won. And the judge says, you can't suppose there's traffic when the study or whatever says maybe not, or whatever, and you can do it. I benefit from Walmart in my neighborhood, and so do a lot of other people, probably all across the North End. Want to know about more Clinton Township angst? I remember people coming forward and saying, we can't have a Kroger gas station at Canal and Garfield. I had people, I heard people come up saying, people coming to get gas are gonna run me over my mobile scooter and crush me, and the traffic on Garfield and Canal is gonna be outrageous, we can't have it. We jerk Kroger around all over the place, told them they couldn't be where the Firestone area, store is now. And finally, until Kroger said, hey, we think we're gonna leave the area, did we get something done. I remember meetings where one particular former member said, we have to write a letter to the Michigan Department of Transportation, because 50 mile an hour speed limit on this new canal is totally unacceptable, and carnage will result. I drive 50 mile an hour on that road, and so does everybody else, but I don't see no carnage coming. Roundabouts were the end of the world for us in Clinton Township, and that never happened. I mean, everything that comes up, we've always got the same arguments. I, I envy Sterling Heights that they're doing this lakeside reinvention. I honestly feel nothing like that could ever happen in this community, because, yeah, I've been in, I've been in this community since there was that little mobile station on Hal, on Hall, on Garfield and Canal, and nothing else. And Hall Road was a two-lane. And if we all were still under that mindset, don't change nothing, that's all we would still be, is a two-lane road community. So I don't know about, the traffic has never materialized, the carnage has never materialized, but Comet Burger says, hey, we're gonna come into McComb, and we're coming into St. Clair Shores. The word from people I know down St. Clair Shores, they're gonna be welcomed with open arms. And people say, well, it's always been so busy at Chick-fil-A, but this is designed to cut that activity down by splitting the Chick-fil-A lovers in half. And so many years, I had to go into another township to buy gas from Kroger. I don't want to have to keep going to another place to get a Chick-fil-A. Why can't I have some nice stuff in my own community? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Georgiana Birdie, and I live in Rivergate, 4432, oh my God, I forgot, 44349 Highgate. I am going to disagree with that gentleman. And basically, because I have sat there, ever since the Hall Road renovation was finished, and we have that turnaround there, just as you cross going east on Hall Road, crossing Romeo Plank, I have sat there, because I live in Rivergate, and I'm going to have to cross there to get back over, and watched accident after accident after accident happen. And my concern is bringing, right across the street from there, more traffic coming out to head east on Hall Road. I think that's very concerning. And at the busy times where we see a, a place like Chick-fil-A, we've got school buses trying to make turnarounds, trying to turn right. I just think a different type of business that didn't have the in and out would be better. I don't know anything about zoning, but I think that the Chick-fil-A, and I love Chick-fil-A, too, that is not the corner to have it. It's dangerous. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir, did you wish to speak?
Chris Gavage, 44179, Manitou. I live in Rivergate as well. I was at the planning commission meeting. I sat through both sessions of what was going on there as it was discussed. And a lot of the concerns that the folks here are bringing up about safety and, and traffic is definitely a concern. But there's other things that we need to think about when this goes through, if it goes through. You know, every time that we make a decision to move forward on a project, there's always consequences of other things that could arise. We closed down the Heinrich exit, or entrance to our subdivision with a gated community, forcing all the traffic onto Dunham. People are not gonna be able to turn left to get out onto Romeo Plank in order to make that, that turn to go south. They're gonna have to use another alternative to get back to that road. That's gonna be their Heinrich, or it's gonna be through Rivergate Sub. If they go through Rivergate Sub, there's only one way to get through there, and that's Dunham. If anybody's driven Dunham and Heinrich, it's a very, very congested area already because of the apartment complex that's over there. There's also a horse farm on the corner, that a lot of times they do shows, and they need it more quiet, and they've got, you know, posted signs. It's a one-way stop through that area right now. So I suggested at the planning meeting that we either look at potentially making that a three-way stop, or putting a light or something there, to alleviate some of that pressure that's gonna be there from that traffic that's gonna come on. You cannot get down to, through Rivergate anymore because of that gated community. It's closed. That traffic, to that, one lady that just spoke, mentioned that turn that goes from the east side, as you're coming, if you're coming west, and you're making that turn. Folks don't realize that that road ends at that turn, even though that sign says that a mile down, that it's a half, half a mile, it's gonna end. They try to get over really quickly and make that, that right turn to get back on M59. And that is right where the driveway is going to be for the Chick-fil-A. So what's gonna end up happening is that you're gonna have folks that are gonna want to get out of that lane to continue down east on M59, that are already causing all these accidents. You're gonna then turn around, and you're gonna have all the folks that are getting out of Chick-fil-A, that can't go down south on Romeo Plank, are gonna try to get on M59 and do the turnaround. So now you have all that traffic merging in that section right there. That's very, very dangerous. They mentioned two things during the meeting that I don't know has been brought up or not. One is that they're gonna estimate, they said, between 100, about 150 cars an hour during peak time, coming through that restaurant. Okay? That's a lot of cars. I don't care how you look at the traffic over there. That road is already very busy. And so you add 150 cars during peak times, which I'm assuming is probably gonna be three to six, which would be dinnertime, and then probably lunchtime as well. You know, 300 cars, that's gonna be 150 cars in, you have to get 150 cars out. They talked about jobs, 150 people are gonna work at this potential location, part-time, I'm guessing, full-time mix. 150 people, where are they gonna park? They talked about parking studies when they were there, when we did the planning commission portion of it, but they didn't talk about where all these people are gonna go. They're gonna go to Jim Real parking lot. They're gonna go to the area that's off to the other side of that, which is that bank and that little plaza that's over there. And if you guys have gone down M59 and looked, they talk about the community, right, and folks coming in. There's no sidewalks that go from Rivergate to Romeo Plank. So it's dirt trails that these kids that they're talking about are gonna go there for family, you know, events and eating and bike rides, have to drive on M59 on dirt roads or dirt trails to get there, to get to that side. The sidewalks have never, never been continued. So they end at the bank, and then they pick up again at Rivergate. And then there's some concrete patches on, over the bridges. So, also I'm asking, I want to get long-winded on it. I just want to say this. Just consider that when we're making this choice, we've already rezoned it, they've already voted that through.
No, well, but, well, during the, during, during, during the planning commission.
Sir, excuse me. Address your comments to the board, not to?
Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay, sorry, sorry. Alls I'm saying is this, is that just consider that there is a lot of things that are going to fall through as a domino when this thing potentially goes through. That's going to put a lot of pressure onto the local communities that are around us. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk? Good evening, Bob Kirk, 19-500 Hall Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. I feel like I live in Rivergate, I'm at the corner there for 20 years, 10 hours a day. But if we're addressing the rezoning at this point?
Yes.
So that zone B2, the property behind this is auto dealership B2, which is unusual. Usually auto dealerships, B3, B4, but Walmart's B4, this is consistent with your master plan, your planning department recommended for it, the zoning board recommended for it at five to three vote. So based on the zoning only, we request that you approve that zoning to a B3, that's consistent with Hall Road, that's consistent with your master plan.
Are you going to present tonight the traffic study that I know has been done?
Yes, that's why I'm asking what we're voting on this first, and the next would be the special land use.
Correct.
The traffic study was submitted prior to the last meeting, Mr. Thompson reviewed it. However, tonight, we even brought the author along tonight to talk about that. We have Jason Lerk from Chick-fil-A talk about operations, and Leslie's here from PEA to talk about site plan.
Okay, so right now, we're only talking about the rezoning?
Yes, correct.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I have a motion.
No, Mr. Gilliam-Maham made a motion, and I supported it.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. All right, Gilliam-Maham.
Roll call on the rezoning.
Okay, Treasurer Gilliam-Maham?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
No.
Clerk Musser, yes, motion passed.
Now, we're moving on to the second part, special land use, development plan approval for the proposed Chick-fil-A. Do you have something to read into the record? If not, we'll go to Mr. Kirk.
It's the same thing. The commission has made review of the proposed request for special land use approval and site development plan approval with a split vote. The action was by vote, it was, yeah, just a split vote. So the matter was petitioned by Justin Lerk, Chick-fil-A Inc., as represented by Leslie Accardo, PEA Group, sincerely George Sassen, Clinton Township Planning Commission. So there's no recommendation brought forward, it just failed.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, you have the floor.
Again, Bob Kirk, 19-500 Hall Road, Clinton Township. We are requesting special land use and site plan approval on this. Everyone knows it's the obsolete Fifth Third Building on the corner. Actually, the owner of this building owns River Ridge and operates that, so he has purchased this corner. We're trying to utilize it as a Chick-fil-A, everyone knows that issue. It came without recommendation from the Planning Commission. There's four factors in your special land use ordinance. I believe three were, your planning department said we met them all. Three were not discussed, one talks about noise, vibration. The big one was traffic. That's what we're here to address tonight. I want to point out one thing in there, it's special land use. The standard isn't that it's going to increase traffic. It says that traffic should be no more hazardous than is normal in the district involved, taking into consideration traffic flow and off-street parking. So today, we're going to address this off-street parking or stacking. Everyone looks at that Hall Road and Shaner as being a real problem. That opened up during COVID, that's the only location in Macomb at the time. There's two more in Macomb under consideration. They're going to go into all this, but there's a lot of factors that go into this. We feel we meet all the standards, and that it should be approved. So with that, we have, Leslie, Jason?
Good evening, Justin Lerk.
Good evening.
Okay, all right. Justin Lerk with Chick-fil-A, addresses 5200 Buffington Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Let me make sure I can advance this. Great. So obviously, we've talked about the site at Hall Road and Romeo Plank, Fifth Third Bank, that's what's up on the screen. We're not proposing to change any of the curb cuts that are existing today, but did want to address some of the site plan concerns that were brought up. So this is the preliminary site plan, again, keeping the same access off of Hall Road, same access off of Romeo Plank that's existing today. It's right around two acres. I know your report says 2.18 acres, you see 1.99 here. We'll just say approximately two-acre site. A lot of people reference the site down on Shelby Township, that's an approximately one-acre site. So this is twice as big as the site just down the street. Parking spaces, code requires 31 spaces, we're providing, we're proposing to provide 81 spaces on this site. We've talked about, you heard approximately 120, 150 employees. It doesn't mean all of them are there at one time. Typical shift is 25 to 30 people, so we've got 81 spaces. Not every one of the employees that come to work at a restaurant bring a vehicle. So parking spaces there, bike racks, three required, we're proposing to provide three there, about the same size, 5100 square foot building. And then we would have an outdoor patio with seats at the north end of the site plan as well. And then it was mentioned as well, the dedicated pedestrian and sidewalk access from Hall Road that obviously connects to the sidewalk system on Romeo Plank as well. So this is just a preliminary site plan, and wanted to show just the visual, you can access it from either one of those two points, and then you could leave from either one of those two points as well. If you access it from Hall Road, on that northern access point, you would drive south, and then you have an option to park along any of the parking spaces that we propose on the outside, or enter the drive-through queue and order and pick up your food and leave from there. So traffic study was talked about. As mentioned, it was submitted prior to the Planning Commission, so we do have Jill Byer here with Fishbeck. She was the author of the report, so we wanted to spend a little time going through the report, and then I'll come back up and address a few other items.
Thank you. This is in regard to the traffic study that was done, which was not presented at the Planning Commission meeting.
Right. It was.
It was submitted, but you could, Robert, that was your job to present it. Now it's your turn.
Okay. Jill Bauer with Fishbeck, 39-500 McKenzie Drive, Novi, Michigan. So we prepared a traffic impact study, using standard practice. We reached out to both MDOT and the Macomb County Department of Roads, as they're the jurisdictions for Romeo Plank and Hall Road, and they presented us the intersections they wanted us to study, which included Romeo Plank and Hall Road, the crossovers east and west of Romeo Plank Road on Hall Road, and then also the driveway at the gas station and the driveway at Walmart. They asked us to review the AM peak hour, which is between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., and the PM peak hour, which is 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Macomb County Departments of Roads also asked that we include trip data from local Michigan sites, specifically also including that Shelby Township site. So presented here, we have our trip generation for this study. You can see one thing that we've also included is a pass-by rate, and a pass-by means that there are vehicles that are already on the road that are going to stop at the Chick-fil-A. And specifically for Chick-fil-A, we use 40%. This is something that's seen, as Chick-fil-A tends to be a little bit more of a destination than other fast food. Typically, fast food is around 50% to 55% for a pass-by rate. We also are presenting the data here that we collected at these other stores. You can see that the peak for Chick-fil-A typically, and most fast food, is actually the lunch hour. So that information's been provided in the study, and then we also, for those locations, looked at Saturday. And all of these stores are about the same size as this one. So with taking the traffic counts, we're able to look at this distribution of the traffic onto the local roadways. You can see most of that traffic is going, coming from and going to Hall Road, and then we have a different percentage for our pass-by trips, as those trips are already out there on the roadway. One thing that we did also include, as it tends to be of concern with Chick-fil-A, is we did an analysis for the drive-through queue, making sure that there was adequate space for the vehicles we see queuing up, as you are all probably familiar with the Shelby Township location. So from the number of trips that we will have to this site, we were able to determine that there will be an average of about 12 vehicles that will queue up in line. During the highest peak, that 95th percentile, it'll be about 30 vehicles. And then to point out, at those four stores where we did the traffic counts, we observed in 10 minutes, every 10 minutes, we counted the cars in the drive-through during that morning, lunchtime, evening rush, and even on Saturdays. And our numbers are, the average was 12, the 95th percentile was 31, and the maximum we had was on a Saturday at Shelby Township of 44 vehicles that dissipated within 10 minutes. So there's, going back to the amount of the space that we have available in that drive-through, there's space for, I believe, about 41 vehicles, if you consider each car taking about 25 feet, which is standard practice. From the conclusions of what we looked at with the intersections, we're just recommending some signal timing adjustments, which is something that would be brought up with the Macomb County Departments of Roads when this is submitted to them. But there were no other mitigations proposed from this site, and that is what I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon? I have a question for Joe, if you can answer it. So what about Romeo Plank? So when people can come and turn left out of there during that time period, that is a very busy time. And I know I've gone on that, just south of there is a Cadillac dealership, I see cars trying to turn left out of there and have to wait a long time. Now this will add to that. How is that going to be addressed? Will there be, I'm sorry, one other quick question. Will there be allowed, will there be placed a no left turn sign there?
So that is something that is a decision, that's not something that we've recommended as a part of our study, but that is something that is at the discrepancy for the Macomb County Departments of Roads. They may come back and say, "We will only allow right turns out of this driveway." So.
Sort of like I did on Grossbeck with some of the mine buildings we put in over there.
Right.
But I still want to turn right each time.
I know.
I know. Wait, one second. Sum up, and we saw the numbers, sum up what you just told us.
I guess one of the biggest things, we think, and I believe one gentleman mentioned this, is that with having a second location in Macomb County, you'll start to see you're going to alleviate probably some of the traffic that you're seeing at the Shelby Township site. But overall, we did not see any significant implications of the traffic out there. Like I said, 40% of the traffic that we're accounting for coming to this site is already out there on the road. They're going to be driving past this location anyway, and they'll stop by and they'll grab dinner, breakfast, whatever they might want. So overall, our only recommendation was to look at some of the signal timings at Hall Road and Romeo Plank Road to alleviate some of what we're seeing in existing conditions out there. So.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? Yes. Ms.?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, who paid for this study?
This was paid for by the developer.
Okay, and it came out favorable for them? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just to add on that, the scope of the study was agreed upon between the road.
You got to talk, I can't hear you.
The scope of the study, before the study was prepared, the scope of the study was agreed upon with the county road commission and MDOT.
Thank you.
So you asked for a summary, right? So that's what I'm going to try to do here as well, from a drive-through standpoint. So code requires 16 spaces. What you see up on the screen in green is our drive-through lanes that could accommodate up to 31 cars. And then in yellow would be the additional overflow if needed, which could accommodate another 20 cars, so that's a total of 51. And then in the blue and the pink, you would see additional overflow if needed, which could get up to capacity, not saying this is what would happen, but up to 75 cars onsite if needed. So it's a self-contained site. We don't see cars, we don't see that type of cars or demand even at Shelby Township. So just wanted to go through some of that, and this obviously being two and a half miles away. So again, just wanted to look at some of the comparisons for some of the other stores that we have in the eastern Michigan area here. You can see, fourth on the list there, Shelby Township, has about 25-car capacity in the drive-through, and what we're proposing here is about a 51-car capacity, so over double what's even just at Shelby Township. And then parking spaces onsite at Shelby Township, around 41 spaces, and it's part of a shopping center, so there's shared parking there, so 41 spaces plus shared parking. And we're proposing 81 spaces here, and as mentioned, the owner of this property also owns adjacent spaces as well. So if parking became an issue, we could work with them on parking cars offsite, which I don't, I don't believe it will be an issue. When we typically design a site, we're trying to get around that 70 mark, so we've got 81 here, which would be a surplus from a standard.
Mr. Cannon, can I ask a question about?
Sure.
How many of these, I mean, the Shelby Township one is located in an area with other stores, and you're sharing parking, and it's horrible, I got to say. How many of those are what you're proposing here, which is a totally separate, contained store?
Sure. So let me just run down the list, and I'll answer that. So Allen Park is a separately contained location. Novi is a separately contained location. Northville is within a Kohl's shopping center lot, so I would not say that's a self-contained location, right? Shelby Township is obviously not, we just talked through that. Woodhaven is part of a development like Shelby Township, so that's not contained. Southfield is within the shopping center, just like Shelby Township. Monroe is self-contained, standalone location. Livonia is within a shopping center. Flint is a self-contained. Fort Grashit would be within a shopping center that's under construction, opening this fall. Roseville is within the mall, so that's like Shelby Township. Taylor would be self-contained, and Chesterfield self-contained, so about 50%.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay. I won't go through all these, but obviously, we opened our first location in the Detroit metro area in January of 20. We obviously all know what happened, and just a few months later, March of 20, we continued investing in the area and opening stores through COVID, specifically Shelby Township, opened in January of 21, all local owner operators. So the difference between a Chick-fil-A, so Chick-fil-A is a franchise opportunity, so each store is individually owned and operated. And the key difference on our franchise versus some of the other franchises, if you become a franchisee, you're guaranteed one location, and it's your sole source of income, you can't have another job, which makes you be in the store six days a week, we're closed on Sundays, be in the store, working with your team, building your team, meeting the customers, meeting the people that are coming to the stores. So that's our secret sauce, which is why it's different. In a case like this, Shelby Township, very busy location, we are specifically trying to impact that location. So we're opening one, two and a half miles away, potentially, if it gets approved. That'll be the first one in this area that'll be that close to an existing location, but that's a strategy of ours that we deploy when you have a busy location like Shelby Township. So just wanted to give some background there. If you're the owner of Shelby Township, and you're, the only way, or one of the ways to help kind of alleviate some of that pressure is to open one nearby, you would have the opportunity to apply for a second location, which may or may not get granted. They would be in the same application pool as any other applicant to own this potential location. But as a franchisee at Chick-fil-A, you're capped out at three locations. You could get a second one, it's rare. Having a third is even more rare, but you're capped out at three. So I just wanted to explain that, that local ownership model, and how that works for us. So again, nine open locations in the Detroit metro area. We've got four under construction right now, one in Chesterfield, obviously in Macomb County, one in Roseville, in Macomb County. We've got one up in Fort Grashit under construction, and one in Taylor. And then we've got two other active deals that we're working on in Macomb County. Hopefully, within a few more months, we'll be back in front of a board presenting another location in Clinton Township as consideration. So we're not trying to just open up one location and then move on and be done. So I wanted to kind of talk about the 30,000-foot view, how we look at Michigan, how we look at the Detroit metro area, what our goals are. So again, nine open locations, plus Somerset Mall and the Detroit Medical Center, on average, about 120 people per location, so 1,300-plus employees in the metro area right now. What I wanted to focus on was a 10-year look ahead. We want to open up another five to 10 locations in the state of Michigan over the next 10 years, so another 50-plus locations in the state of Michigan. Obviously, we're in front of you as one of those potential locations. Our goal is to be within a 10-minute drive time of 80% of the population. So how do you do that? You open up more stores. You open up more stores. And that kind of, that kind of gets me to this chart. We mentioned it already. We've got one open location in all of Macomb County, Shelby Township. All of Macomb County, over 800,000 people, that's supply and demand, right? We don't have one location for a large population. With Roseville opening this fall, Chesterfield opening this fall, obviously bringing it up to three, hopefully this would be four. We've got two more in Macomb County that were, that are active deals right now. And we've got over another half dozen that we're, we're working on where we're trading paper right now. So just wanted to give you a kind of a 30,000-foot view. I know we're focused on this one site right now, but I wanted to show, you know, help explain like what our overall vision is here. I know this probably doesn't mean anything to you right now, but the far-right chart is how many stores do we have per person? And we broke it down into those 11 counties plus city of Detroit. So in Atlanta, Georgia, where we were founded, the market penetration's about one store per 50,000 people. Macomb County has one store per 875,000 people right now. That's the white elephant in the room, right? It's busy. How do you, how do you, how do you help that? This is what we're proposing here. So again, just trying to help you get the vision as we're looking at this site plan. Again, the traffic study, you know, looking at traffic on Hall Road and Romeo Plank, over 125,000 cars a day at that intersection. Also wanted to boil it down into like, people ask, we heard up to 150 cars per peak hour. It's not every hour we're open, but peak hour, lunch hours, and dinner hours. But I've been asked, how many cars per day does that equal? We won't track how many cars per day, but we track transactions at each store. And on average, we're seeing anywhere from 1,200 to 1,800 transactions per day over a 15-hour period. So let's say every single transaction was a car. I know my family, we usually have two to three transactions per car. Got a big family, so we go in and eat and dessert and take some home as well. If every transaction was a car, let's say on average 1,800 cars a day, let's just round it up to 2,000 for easy math, right? As Jill mentioned, typical fast food, you would count 50% of the people in the network already on Romeo Plank or Hall Road, so 1,000 cars, right? Which would add 1,000 cars to the network, 1,000 cars to 125,000-car intersection. So we're not talking about a big Walmart or Kroger coming in here. We're looking at 1,800 to 2,000 transactions per day. So I wanted to boil it down to that as well.
Mr. Cannon?
And then I'm gonna.
Question?
Yeah.
Just wanted to know, when you guys looked at this site, had you looked at other sites in Clinton Township before this one?
We continue to look at all kinds of sites.
What made you pick this location?
It's a busy intersection at Hall Road and Romeo Plank.
Money, of course. Yeah. Makes sense, but I was just asking.
I mean, as a retailer, you want to go where the cars are.
Right. Okay. I was just wanting to know.
Yes, sir. You said that the franchisees are owner-operators?
Mm-hmm.
Does this gentleman, does this family live in Clinton Township?
Say that again.
The franchisee for this Chick-fil-A location, you said that they're owner-operators. Does this family or does this individual live in Clinton Township?
We don't have a franchisee selected for this store yet. Typically, a franchisee would be selected right around construction start. So since it's not, since it's your sole source of income, once you become, once you become the selected franchisee, you have to terminate any existing employment.
So who is the petitioner? Who's asking for this? The corporation?
Me, Justin Lurk with Chick-fil-A, Inc., correct.
And do you own the property, or is there a lease agreement with the property?
There'd be a lease, there's a lease agreement on the property. We are not the owner of the property.
One quick question. For the one in Shelby, that owner lives in Macomb County, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, he's building a house in Clinton Township.
Yeah. So I was gonna say, he lives in Clinton Township. So they do stay within the area.
Yes. Any other questions for me? If not, I'll let Mr. Kirk come up and close out a few other, and obviously, we're here if there are more questions that come up.
Robert?
Just real quick, I want to point out, Mr. Kirk, you brought up the traffic study. I've been doing this 30 years. I sit on that side of the table a couple times a month. These traffic studies on both sides are very good. Fishback is good. And I get calls from developers or users like this. If a traffic study doesn't work, accessory, they walk away. So they're gonna make sure, they're not here just to plug themselves, they're here to be here. They run through numbers, they have a corporation, they have a system they go through. So these are important, and they're usually pretty right on.
Further comments of the board members? Go to the community.
Yes, sir. Sam Bushel, 1-8546, Whaling Drive. I know the rezoning's already gone through to a B3, but there again, it was mentioned that if they need extra parking, they'll use the adjacent B2 property. And that's kind of a biggie, I think. It's a matter of, does the B2 property suddenly become B3? And the other thing is, at the planning commission, and luckily, it's all on video, the owner-operator, this was only going to be one store, there was no more of this three, that all of a sudden, today it's three, but he says, you don't have to worry about there being a problem at the store because every owner-operator, that is their only job and their only one place. And now they've got possibly three stores, and it's, if I was gonna guess, I'd say the Shelby Township owner is probably the one thinking of building this. And it, but it's very different than what was presented at the planning commission. The other part of this that is kind of strange is, you know, if it, this would not have been, you know, like right now, it came with no recommendation because it was 4-4. And I think a lot of the people even in the subdivision there, they're so against it, probably don't realize that the only reason it was 4-4, that it wasn't 4-3, is the fact that one of your appointees that does not, he lives in Oakland County, does not live in Clinton Township, does not, he said he comes here maybe twice a week into Clinton Township. And he's making decisions that 267 people signed a petition that they don't want this. But the sheer fact that you buy a piece of property, you want to rezone it to B3, and then you want special land uses on top of that, and you want the ability to use the B2 property next door for overflow parking, I think you know what you got to do. You got to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name's Constance Leonard. I live in Rivergate at 19064 Colleen Drive. I've sat in here and listened to all the pros and cons. Basically, I'm against it, and I hope that you'll vote that way. There's no need for another fast food. I don't eat Chick-fil-A, I've never had it, but then I don't eat greasy food. So with that said, yes, I oppose Walmart, and I still don't go there. Don't we have enough businesses? I mean, how, it's corporate greed. Leave the neighborhoods alone. I don't want to sit on my beautiful deck in a home that I pay outrageous taxes for and smell chicken. Nobody does. Please do not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you're standing there. You can go next.
Just real quick, I just wanted to make two points, because I think that words matter in this situation, and I really think that's important.
Your name and address, please?
I'm sorry.
Your name and address?
Chris Gavage, 44179, Manette, too. The representative from Chick-fil-A used the word should, shouldn't. They shouldn't see an overflow issue, okay? That's an important word in this, they shouldn't. Is the township ready to fund police to direct traffic for this establishment should the traffic become a problem? Where's that money going to come from? We just spent three hours in here talking about funds and budgets and money and chipping, and now we're talking about potential overflows for police. The second piece of this is that the representative for the road commission, that, the road study said 40% of the traffic is already on the road. He then turned around and said 50% of the traffic is on the road. Okay, so that means that there's going to be 60% influx of traffic into this area that's already in one of the busiest corners of this county. So I don't know that those roads can support that type of traffic flow. So just think about that when you guys are getting ready to have your vote about what was being said, because I don't know that there was a lot of consistency with what we were told, so.
Sir?
Hello. Jeffrey Drost, 43657 Catawba. I live at Rivergate. One of the slides that they had for Chick-fil-A said dedicated pedestrian sidewalk access from Hall Road. And to go on the point that the gentleman said earlier, what sidewalk is there to get there? Presented to the board, I have several pictures that were taken today, where there is over 100 yards of no sidewalk there. Plus, you can see in here, there's a yardstick. This yardstick, there's an itty-bitty path. If you go to left, you smash into a traffic sign. You go to the right, you go into oncoming traffic on the Hall Road. The oncoming traffic on the Hall Road, that's going to be busier. Appreciate Chick-fil-A, like the business, but we need to get the sidewalk fixed here. It's the Shell Silverstein of Clinton Township, it's where the sidewalk ends. For some reason, you go to Sterling Heights, you go to Shelby Township, M59 completely sidewalk. But then, I invite the board members to take a walk and see themselves. So these pictures, I can pass these pictures around. At the end, I don't normally talk at these things, not as glib as everybody here. So I can pass these pictures around, but I invite you to take a walk, and you'll see what I'm talking about. I have worries, there's areas where you can't even fit. Excuse me.
Jeffrey, do you want me to take those for you?
Yeah, please. There's areas where you can't even fit two bicycles side by side, and there's overgrowth where it's less than a yardstick going through. If the Chick-fil-A goes in, there is going to be more pedestrian traffic, there is going to be more traffic in general. The study that was talked about, talked all about vehicular traffic, did not talk about pedestrian traffic. There is going to be more pedestrian traffic from workers, from people who are just interested in walking from Rivergate to go pick up some Chick-fil-A. So I invite all the board members to please take a look, walk it, and consider this in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon? Mr. Cannon? Mr. Cannon, I do have a question. I know that Justin had mentioned about the sidewalk. Justin, were you saying that that would pick up right where the sidewalk ends at Rivergate all the way to the Chick-fil-A? Would that sidewalk be put in place by you guys, or?
No.
How far would that go?
What I was referring to is the sidewalk that's on the north side of the property in question on Hall Road.
Just as far as your property line goes.
And the sidewalk on the west side of the property. Can't do any work off of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Leonella Weir, 35695 Blairmore. I don't live in the area, but I do know it's super busy. If they like to put a Chick-fil-A, it should be farther down east, like someone else said, on a place where there's not a corner, because that corner is terrible. You can put up all the no right turn signs you want, people are going to try to make right turns or left turns or whatever. And then when it comes time, when the orders don't come out fast enough, and people get mad and take off, they're going to go flying out into that road and kill people. It needs to be on a straight highway, not a corner.
Thank you.
Especially as busy as that.
No. Further comments from the community? Sir?
Fred Nienstedt, 41362, Justin Drive, Clinton Township. Having seen the property managed, traffic management on the Shelby Township site firsthand many times, their management is outstanding for the property and for traffic management and safety. Also, my idea of the problems on the road as you pass by that location are more akin to a car wash that would back up into the traffic flow. So if the property is not managed properly, there is a significant traffic hazard when the traffic backs up onto the main highway. I'm sure, having seen what has been handled, the tremendous volume in the Shelby Township site, that this would never happen, given what I can see in the site plan. Now, how is it that there is a traffic hazard? I agree, as Clerk Meltzer pointed out, a left turn from the site onto Romeo Plank would be hazardous. Is it any more hazardous than any other left turn in any other busy intersection? It's farther away from the corner, I would have to say, given the free rights of property ownership in America, that you're going to have to show me. When there's a problem, put the sign up, no left turn. Now, on Hall Road, many people pull out onto Hall Road from all kinds of locations all over Shelby Township, Macomb Township, Sterling Heights. Where is the horrendous traffic problem? Is it really about turning onto this Hall Road, or is it more about four lanes of traffic being cut down to three lanes of traffic? And the hazardous turns to avoid a lengthy drive of maybe 1,000 yards to make a turnaround to go west? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Then we're going to go to the board for a motion and a decision.
I'm Ed Gorzic. I live at 44304 Pentwater Drive in Clinton Township, and I'm a Rivergate resident. So I drive this intersection almost daily. And if you've ever come up, traveling northbound towards M59 on Romeo Plank, and if you do it at rush hour, you know the traffic will back up, sometimes almost as far back as the loop around that's over, that clover, not the clover lane, the, I'm sorry, the It backs, it backs up way back there. If you look at how people typically drive, especially at rush hour, they tend to get angry. They want to get home, they're in a hurry. And I've seen short tempers on Romeo Plank as people are headed northbound, whether they're going straight or whether they're turning. I've seen people who don't, who are in the right lane, want to make a right turn onto eastbound M59. And if they're not moving fast enough, I've seen people cut out into the left lane if there's an opening, go around them. My concern is that if you have some, you're going to have a backup, because when the 875,000 people realize that we've got the second store, they're going to travel from all over to visit this store, because they know what it was like going to the Shelby one. That was, that was a headache, just trying to get in there, to any other store. Anyway, my concern is, you're going to have a backup of people on Romeo Plank who want to get into the Chick-fil-A. Then you're going to have people who are going to try to get around them because they want to make the right turn. You're also going to have people, and it's not just getting the people in, it's how do you get the people out? And so now you have another issue. I can't imagine anybody making a left turn on that purple line, I guess, heads out and supposed to be a left turn. They'll get killed, making a left turn across all that traffic. And then if you decide to go off the Hall Road exit, people aren't going to go down to the next turnaround, which is past Rivergate. There's a light at Rivergate, and if you could just go past that, there's a nice loop around. But how do, how do we drive? We're in a hurry. They're going to shoot straight across for that left turn lane, because at Romeo Plank, it's a dedicated left turn lane. All that third lane that's traveling eastbound must turn left into that first loop around, which is right across from the Chick-fil-A exit, the blue line, I believe that's what it is. And people aren't going to go down nicely and work their way across. They're going to shoot across, and they're, and the eastbound traffic backs up at rush hour. So there's a solid line, oftentimes going into the intersection. So now, people are going to come out and nose in, and now their tail is hanging out because they just came from the driveway, and they're trying to wedge themselves into the westbound loop around traffic. So it's going to be a big headache. And when someone says, well, show me, because I don't think there's going to be accidents there, if you go online, you'll see that the Michigan State Police report says the intersection of Hall Road and Romeo Plank is one of the most dangerous intersections in Michigan. At one time, it was number 15, the worst, for the whole state, not just, not just for Clinton Township or Macomb County, for the entire state. Now I think it's a little lower. I know they've re-timed the lights, they've done wonderful work at the intersection, but it's a very dangerous place. So why would you put all that and a Chick-fil-A that people love and just say, well, let's see what happens? And that's what I'm worried about, and I don't think this should be there. They have interest in going to another location in Clinton Township? Let that be the next location rather than this one. But it's up to you guys. I think it's going to be dangerous, I think there's going to be a lot of people hurt. The record. I think there's going to be a lot of people hurt. Um the record is right now, at that location, um this isn't the current data, there's been 86 accidents at Hall Road and Romeo Plank and 27 injuries. And I think it's more, this is old data. So it's dangerous. I don't know why we're doing it. Thank you.
We've heard, we've heard from the community. Sir, you, have you spoken already?
I have not gotten to speak.
Okay, then you have the, you have the floor.
Daniel Ewing, again, Rivergate, um 44781 Rivergate Drive. Um again, it's, it's already been decided potentially. Hopefully you've not decided already and can, you know, make, make some, at least some measures to make sure that it goes through without all the issues that we're foreseeing that could be. Uh there, the, the turnaround as it is to go eastbound to get into Rivergate when I'm coming home from school, from work, excuse me, uh is from uh, it is right next to the turnaround to go west. And I've been nearly hit many, many times because people pull out of that fourth lane, you know, the turnaround lane that they're not supposed to be in when they were going eastbound. And nobody knows the rules in Michigan when they drive, and it's just getting worse and worse. And we're going to make it worse by adding this cluster. Um and I pray that it's not going to be as bad as, as, as it looks like it could be. Make good decisions.
Thank you. Further comments from the board? I too lived in Rivergate for a long time. In fact, I think you sold my house. We have two gas stations on the corners. We have another fast food restaurant on the corner. And by the way, I hate Chick-fil-A because I don't like chicken. I've been eating chicken lunches for the past 40 years and don't like it. However, many people seem to. It's not fried, I'm told. I also sat through the Walmart issue, and the Walmart people were right, and they took us to court and they won. And if we don't pass this, they will take us to court if they choose, and they will win. How can you have two gas stations and a fast food restaurant and say you can't put another fast food restaurant on the other corner? You can't. You cannot do that. That's not good planning. So I will tell you that even though I don't like chicken, I know people who do, and I'm going to vote yes to approve this plan. And that's my motion.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Mutuzak?
No.
Trustee Keys?
No.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Chris?
No.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 15, 2024 draft master plan, request for distribution.
The Planning Commission is requesting, as required under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act 33 of 2008, that the township board formally approve distribution of the draft 2024 Clinton Township Master Plan. Once approved, the Planning Commission will submit a copy of the draft master plan to the appropriate agencies as required by PA 33 to allow for the required 42-day review period. Once that 40, 42-day review period has expired, the draft master plan will be placed on the next available township board meeting for review and approval. Once the township board has completed this process, they can forward the master plan to the Planning Commission for the formal public hearing process and final approval of the plan. We submit this request for consideration and would appreciate advisement of your determination. Sincerely, George Sasson, Secretary for the Clinton Township Planning Commission.
So it's just like a receive and file, or what are we doing?
I think it's a receive and file. Jack?
Is that Mr. Dolan's receiving file?
Correct.
I make a motion to receive a file.
It's acknowledging the distribution of the, of the plan.
I'll second that motion.
Sir, you have the floor.
There again, Sam Bushel, 18546 Wayland Drive. And there again, as you know, I emailed you, I know I bug you a lot with my emails, but I told you that the, the Planning Commission just refused to let the citizens talk on this master plan as it went along until the final, the one meeting. And what's funny about this master plan update is on page 35 and 36, it goes into great detail about enforcement of ordinances and removing of blight in the residential areas. Then you go to page 43, and the whole attitude changes. They want to have sensible but effective code enforcement on commercial and industrial properties. Well, I am sorry, but that's, the blight that I see, and there again, I'm on the south end, so that might make a difference, but the blight that I see is the fact that it's, it's uh in the commercial areas and the industrial areas. Equal enforcement, a major, it would be a major change from how the township has been handling this now. It's required, though. Equal enforcement. Your voters, you have an election coming up real soon, you have voters. Please send this back to the Planning Commission before it is published. There again, what you're doing tonight is you're actually, you're publishing it to the different cities and everything around us. It's not just receive and file. You're not filing it, you're sending it out. And I don't think you should send this out to Sterling Heights and Mount Clones and everybody else while you're saying, we're going to go after our citizens, something fierce in the houses, but just let these businesses just do what they want. We've got to handle them with delicate handles. And that is ridiculous, and it's been a problem in the past.
Further comments from the community? Roll call, please.
Oh, Mr. Cannon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I had a gentleman talking to me. I have a couple of questions. I've not been through this process before, so I, I, so we're sent, we have sort of, this is like a first draft. It's like a first draft?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sir, don't speak in the audience, because first of all, you're wrong most of the time you speak. Second of all, you're out of order.
Right. So this is, so we're sending this out for comment to people?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And then when we get comments, this can be revised or redone.
Exactly.
Because I have not had a chance to read it cover to cover yet.
Mr. Cannon, it's a 42, just to hear a point, it's a 42-day review.
Right. And so citizens have an opportunity to respond to this.
Of course.
As well as us and other departments or whatever that need to look at it. Because just glancing through it, I, there were a couple of things that caught my attention. One actually has to do with the, the aftermath of the goo situation in terms of figuring out how we can deal with inspection enforcement for some of these commercial properties that we've now discovered as people go out, that they don't even know what they're storing in there. Um and so there's some things I would like to look at, but so I just want to make clear that.
You've got.
We got 45 days to do this.
Forty-two.
Forty-two days to do this.
And you go to Mr. Thompson, your.
So that's my question. Then if people read it and, and have comments and questions, back to Mr. Thompson?
Yes, and this should not look the same when it comes back to us.
Right. Okay. That's, that was my question. Because I, I would like to spend some time with it and think about it and do that. All right.
Mr. Keys?
Yeah, as usual, Trustee Mutuzak has articulated it well enough. I don't need to muddy it. Um but that's really what I wanted to say is that there's, I haven't had the time to go through every aspect of this, but there are a couple of things that I would like to see, whether it's improved or enhanced. I mean, just looking at page, I think it's 22. Um I, I've brought this up almost every year that we've done this, is we, we have an inventory of what's at our parks, but we really don't go into what the quality of the, of that inventory is. So I remember even on my first, you know, round with this, we were counting two baseball diamonds at Prince Jury when, in reality, you know, we knew that two of them were not really in usable condition. So, you know, 22, page 22, really just looks like a copy and paste from what we've been doing for eight years. I would really like to see an improvement on that. Um and that just kind of goes through a couple other categories here, where if you look at it, it really just, it looks like a copy and paste from some of the other studies we've done. I'd like to see a show some progress in those areas, specifically when we do get into the goals at the very end. There's a couple of them that I think we've already accomplished. And so I would like to get an update and report on where we're at with those if, you know, we haven't gotten as far. Uh the one that comes to mind is a list of business, vacant businesses on Grasha and Grosspec. That was an initiative we did four, six years ago. Spent a lot of time, had a whole presentation here. We built a website, partnered with the county. You know, in, in, in this plan, it says we're three to four years away from that. So I, I'd like to make sure that we're up to date on all of our goals and us as board members, or maybe even pushing department heads to be a bit more aggressive and more uh progressive in, in the goals that they're setting. So I'm excited to take a look at this over the next 42, was it?
Yes, 42.
Thank you.
Just FYI, with me sitting on the Planning Commission, yes, some of them might have been copied and pasted, but the whole thing was to send it out so we can get that feedback. So this is where it comes to you guys, as well as the other standing public, um in the different cities, to get that input. So it might look the same, but this is your chance to change that look.
Right. Just based off that to Trustee Patton, and you know, I know obviously like with our Parks and Rec Master Plan, I think, I thought the last time we did the updates to the master plan, we hired a firm to actually come in and assist the, our.
They're assisting on this as well. They're waiting for input.
And so which, remind me, that's what I, it didn't say.
Whoever, it did say it on, where am I copying?
Yeah, who the firm was.
It did say it was on there, so. But again, you can.
Do you know, does anyone know the firm that?
Again, all questions can be Mr. Thompson or updates, because he's the one that's.
I think he's updating right now. I can hear him speaking. Is that Mr. Thompson?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the other thing.
It's easy to get hold of him tomorrow.
But again, the, if I can call him and he can give me an answer, but the members of the public, the people that we want input from, don't have that. And so what I would like to do is give them all the tools they need, not to have to go to a website, find a phone number, call a director, find out who the marketing firm is that's helping us. We're, we're here tonight to talk about this. We don't need to rush through it so quickly.
Yeah.
We have some time to talk about it. I'm just asking, what firm, who are we paying to help put this together?
Mr.?
Go back. There you go.
Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Thompson is here.
I am here.
Yes.
So if I can through the chair, um when, when we first, this administration started looking at the, the five-year update, uh we considered whether or not, from a budget standpoint, we should hire a consultant, were the potential changes that might be necessary in need of consultants? And it was determined that we would uh go at this master plan update in-house instead of hiring a consultant. So there is no consultant.
I apologize.
Yeah.
This is being done strictly in-house through the Planning and Community Development Department.
Okay. That, thank you, Mr. Thompson. I think that goes to why we need to be talking about this. We don't all have the same information. We need to make sure we have accurate information. And in addition, I think that, Mr. Thompson, hopefully in talking with you, we could even look at opportunities to bring in outside eyes to enhance this, because although it is good to do things in-house, I mean, obviously, this is a township where, you know, when I first got on, we didn't even have a master plan. So keeping everything in-house can often keep us in a silo as well. Um so I think it's good to, to really have fresh eyes on these as well.
But, Mr. Thompson, you also, we also had from that master plan, that was when the firm did it, right? So our whole thing was looking at that and just making any updates from what the firm had already provided, correct?
That is correct. And so uh, as you said, five years ago, when I first came on board, there was not a master plan. And so I think everybody involved felt that it was very important to bring in a consultant, uh to, to create the bones, if you will, the, the structure of this master plan. Now, in, in, over the, the last five years, certainly the township has accomplished some of these goals. Um but what, what we saw when we held the public forum and, and when the Planning Commission looked at this master plan is that a vast majority of that master plan still rings true. Now, certainly, there was a need to update statistical information. I think that was probably the biggest issue, because we had the 2020 census since then. And, and that gave us a great deal of information. Uh and there was public input, and there will, can continue to be public input. Uh this particular step is just the board forwarding this to adjacent communities and jurisdictions. For the last three months or more, uh there's been the ability to provide input. There still is. Uh we still look forward to any comments, uh whether it's at the board level or when we get to the final public hearing at the Planning Commission, uh whether it's uh via email to the Planning Community Development Department. Uh we, we've tried to make sure that we've involved as many people as possible, and, and changes will be made, and they can be made even after the public hearing. So uh this is, when you look at the statute and how the process goes, this part is your part. This is the time for the board and obviously uh the adjacent communities and, and other jurisdictions to look at it and provide the input. Um and so that doesn't mean that the citizens can't. Uh they certainly can. We welcome it. Um and we'll continue to do so until uh this board has given their approval, which we're not in a hurry. Um as Mr. Key has indicated, I'm not in a hurry either. Uh we want to take the time to get the proper input. And then ultimately, it goes to the Planning Commission who, who makes that final approval. So there's plenty of time. Um and we look forward to utilizing.
May I ask a question to Mr. Thompson?
Of course.
Mr. Thompson, the, a few months ago, we had a great presentation by Fair Housing Center, which had a, a report about looking at some of the things we can do to um increase what we do housing-wise and some other things. How was, did you all look at that report when you were looking at this, developing this report? Because I think it had some really valuable recommendations in terms of some zoning things and other things.
Not specifically that I recall through the chair, but certainly, you know, if you want to, again, uh Trustee Mutuzak, any, any of you folks, give me that information, right? Tell me, make those recommendations. Give me the information that you, you feel is relevant to this plan, and we can get it in that plan. But certainly, yes, I, I as the planning director can take a look at it. I have not.
Yeah, I believe, I believe your office was the recipient of that report.
Yes, that would be Mr. Wallace.
And Block Grant. And I would really like.
Correct.
To see how these two, these two recommendations could be integrated a little bit.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, that is relative to CDPG and, and, and our community development programs, but absolutely, we can look at incorporating any information from that into the master plan that you feel necessary. 100%.
Mr. Cannon? Mr. Gilliam? Oh, Mr. Dolan? I, I just wanted to, it's probably good timing to mention this. As a matter of fact, I just sent it to, very recently to Mr. Thompson. There's now a House bill pending that's going to require that housing needs be incorporated as part of a master plan. Now, that's not in, it, you know, everything that's been done so far by our department is fine, because it's not yet a matter of law, but I expect that will pass. So housing needs are going to become a part of a master plan uh development in the future, assuming that bill passes. Potentially. Mr. Gilliam, you have the floor?
Thank you. Um so I want to underscore the importance of this document. This is one of those things where it says, hey, township, community, residents, this is where we are now. Um this is a guidepost, a roadmap, if you will, where do we want to be? And so when you think of it with that perspective and how important it is, you have to figure out what your starting point is. And so we have one of these that was done five years ago. So when this was talked about in the staff meeting, when you think about an approach, okay, tell me what was changed. I don't want to see just the document. I want to see this document in relation to this document and a specific underlining of what are the changes from that version to this version. That's a good starting point. Then to look at what hasn't changed, to then look at what we think we need to change. All good points by my colleagues, but I wanted to mention that. I asked for that in the staff meeting, and Mr. Thompson, I believe, has responded, correct me if I'm wrong, but I got an email from you. I have not had the chance to read it yet, but I want to encourage my colleagues to take a look at that email, because that is, hey, from five years ago to now, this is what we changed in this current version of it. Then we can look at where we need to go.
If I may, um it was, I did email, um Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Uh the, the entire board. And as well, uh there is a corresponding letter in this evening's packet that does outline all of the changes that were made that Mr. Gilliam had requested. So uh that information is there. I did email it as well. Um so please do take a look at it, absolutely. Um and um again, this is a continuing process, so let's continue.
As the senior trustee, I'll take.
There's no board rules, there's private rules, so there's no senior trustee. So we just wait for?
Here you come.
Mr. Cannon.
Michael was ready to take over.
Didn't want to break the gavel, though.
He thought it was still board rules available.
Are you done already?
Yes.
Someone's got to talk about the master plan.
Are you guys done?
Yep, we're all set.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Do you want, want to speak to it?
Just a quick question. As a resident, how do we get a hard copy of this document?
Pay for it?
Pay for it.
No, I'm teasing.
Get better money.
You walk to the front, and I will give you mine.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I can give you mine.
Well, thank you so much, guys, sir.
And then we expect input.
Oh, me, input?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
I think what's important for the board, you know, that this was presented to you, you're not just going to receive and file. It's, it's right on the, the agenda. You're going to distribute it there around, around the community. And to give you, I just pointed out the part about how it was discriminatory against homes. But if you also look in there, one of our big master plans that we're going to hope to do in the next few years is to redevelop the college site into, you know, something else, not like a church or anything we're going to vote, but it's all done. It's stuff that's totally done that's in there. To say it was cut and pasted, and, and there again, I think that's the biggest problem with, and there again, at the Planning Commission, trustee Patton is, is a planning commissioner, they wouldn't allow the public to see, speak, and luckily, they're all on video, and you can check. And Mr. Department Malayo, that's how he says his name, Mr. D, everybody calls him, he says, no, public can't talk on this. So they don't allow, like here, you get to talk on items. At the Planning Commission, your appointees, because it's all of your appointees, they don't let people talk.
That's not true. Please, please don't say things that aren't true.
Watch the video.
You go around saying things that aren't true all the time. Stop it.
Watch the videos.
If, if we let him speak like that, then people might start believing him. And that's not true. All right. We have a motion on the floor.
Yes. Mr. Cannon?
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cannon? Mr. Thompson is speaking.
Mr. Thompson?
If you don't mind, I, I would agree with you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Bouchelle is incorrect. He is characterizing the discussion that was had at the Planning Commission level incorrectly. There was one meeting where I had asked, as, as a discussion, post-meeting, that whether or not the, the Planning Commission wanted to consider the master plan review being done with the help of a consultant, or whether they wanted to see it done in-house. That, I think, happened at the end of two different meetings. It was not a public meeting, it was not an agenda item, nor was it a public hearing. It was just the planning department trying to determine what direction the Planning Commission wanted to go. And so I just wanted to make that point clear. We held a public forum, we noticed it, we, you know, put it on the website, we tried to gain information, and that was the time for the public to speak, just like it is now, because it is an agenda item and just like it will be when it's back in front of the Township Board and as well at the public hearing at the Planning Commission level, the final step. So each of those steps where public input is allowed, or it has certainly been allowed. So I just wanted to make that very clear to the public. At no, at no time was anybody barred from speaking when, when public comment was, was asked for.
I know that. Thank you.
I just want to point out, Mr. Cannon, that because we're responding when we shouldn't be, now Mr. Bouchelle has his hand up again. So now it's back and forth when it's not supposed to be back and forth.
Exactly. So that's why we're going to end it. And we have a vote coming right now. Mrs. Meltzer?
Trustee Patton, yes. Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Quest?
No.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I am 16.
That's right.
Request approval, ownership change, 123net.
I don't think he's seen it yet. All right.
I'll waive the reading of the letter and make a motion to approve if Mr. Dolan can explain what we're doing.
Yes, this is a, 123net is a company that does telecommunications improvements throughout different communities in Michigan. And what's occurring is a company called Grain Management, which is a large private equity firm that has, they've been acquiring companies like 123net. They already have companies in Colorado, Kansas, Nebraska, South Dakota, Illinois, Indiana, and Kentucky. And they're acquiring this company as an investment. The line people in this company are remaining the same. It's just an acquisition of ownership. And I had sent correspondence electronically to the people at 123net who responded confirming that there isn't going to be any change in terms of the actual management of operations within the township.
Okay, yeah. And obviously, the email backup kind of explained that. I know we couldn't get to the attachment that was referenced, but it was all laid out in the email.
I support the motion.
The, the question I just, I guess I have is, the idea is, we're only approving this because they're using a public right-of-way to, to provide their service. Is that right?
Well, yes. They're subject to the Telecommunications Act, and I explained that also in my email, which, this is just an example of how there's been a continued erosion over decades now for, particularly in telecommunications, in the cable television area of local control. And this is a, this particular act is an example of it. They get to come in and get the right-of-way, and basically, a state agency controls the distribution under a formula of funds back to cities, villages, and townships.
Okay, thank you. And again, I won't belabor, but I bring this up whenever we do the fiber optic, you know, issues when, when the companies are coming in and being able, basically, without much negotiation, to do, you know, what they want to do, because the state law allows for it. So don't really know that there's much correlation with this item, but obviously, there was a lot of similarities to me, so wanted to bring it up. And Mr. Dolan, if you don't mind, I'd love to be able to kind of talk, if there is any connections, to, again, those fiber optic agreements that we have in something like this, just a simple name change. So just a topic for a future. Thank you.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Quest?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Request approval for auto state conference for the clerk's office.
I'll make a motion for approval. Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Quest?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 18 is a request to go on a closed session. We will not be coming out of closed session.
So moved.
Support? Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Mr. Cannon, if you don't mind, I am going to recite for the record, the reason for the closed session is to consider the written confidential opinion of myself as legal counsel involving the consent judgment property owned by Republic Building in Glenwood.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no.
Oh, public comments.
Public comments.
I've said so much of it, I forgot.
Paul, you're first.
Good.
What did I say? Did I say yes?
Paul Schors?
Yes, Paul, I'm sorry. Your first, Paul.
I said yes. Why didn't you? All right. Nope. It's okay. Just let it go.
Oh, God, no. I want to be associated with you. You only have three minutes, Paul.
You just shot yourself in the foot. It's okay.
Yeah, you don't need it.
It's just a foam thing.
You made a, it's your decision.
All right. My name is Paul Schors, 38057 Moravian, and I'm here to tell you guys another tragic accident on Moravian Drive, a block from my house. Head-on collision, was very catastrophic, and then a car ended up on the neighbor's lawn. Both vehicles totaled out. And it's because people are going towards the center lane, the side of the road's gone, and it's just, it's going to happen again. The road needs to be fixed. And I'm not going to talk too much about that, but I am going to talk about altering a public record, all right? It is a felony, reference following MCL, Michigan compiled law, MCL 168.932, prohibited contact, conduct violation as a felony, section 932, a person who violates one or more of the following subdivisions is guilty of a felony. Exervert and inspector of election clerk or other officer or person having custody of any record, election list, or voter's affidavit, return statements of votes, certificates, poll books, or of any paper document or vote of any description which pursuant to this act is directed to be made, filed, or preserved shall not willfully destroy, mutilate, deface, falsify, or fraudulently remove or secrete any or all of those items in whole or in part or fraudulently make any entry, erase, or alteration of, or any of those items or permit any other person to do so. My voting record was altered, all right? I have the proof. You trustees should take this into consideration, all right? It is against the law to alter voting records, all right? I got them from her, all right? I went back. First time I went back there, I, I got the voting record, the user column was there. The second time I went back there, it was gone. The third time I went back there, it was gone again, but it was, it was laid out differently. It was laid out like this, all right? I asked her, I asked her, listen, five seconds, okay? I asked her, where is it? Where's the user column? She, she said to me, we only do what they tell us to do, all right? So now, I had to have an investigation.
Paul, your time is up.
This is what it looks like now. I actually got a voter ID number now. I never got that.
Your time is up.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, listen.
Jeffrey Brown?
This ain't over.
I'm sorry.
I'm all set.
All set? Okay. Sam Bouchelle?
There again, you know, again, I was smeared again as to telling falsehoods here. And this is all on video, so I just wanted everybody to know. And, and this is like, you've got to realize, when, for many, many years, I had, I had to force the fact that because it's an open meeting at the Planning Commission and the ZBA, they never had public comment, and would not allow that either. Anybody can go to the videos of the meetings, and they will see. I'm sure Ms. Patton is not going to, you know, approve it now, but meeting after meeting, you can see where Mr. D, the chairman, he out and out says, this isn't for public comment. Oh, no, they, they don't allow you to speak on items. And so that's, well, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to let you know, as a lot of you know, I started, you know, putting out, you know, photos online today of not only the areas of the commercial properties where, you know, the, our building department has refused to maintain that and you do the ordinances, but also, I, to all of your, actually, everybody that's running in the[1663.72]